Yes, thanks for uh, thanks for coming on mister.
Yeah, no thanks Eddie, it's nice to see you like, it's been years.
So you are Donald Abbott.
Yep.
I will introduce you of as of your, your latest title, which congratulations. Alright, I don't wanna mess it up. So, city council, Ward one.
Yes sir.
Sparks Nevada.
Perfect.
Alright, great, cool. So, where I wanted to start was, for those that aren't familiar with Sparks.
Where is it?
What is, what is Sparks?
Okay, uh, Sparks is, you know, it's in the state of Nevada, it's just east of Reno. You know, and Reno is fairly near, if you're not familiar, Reno is, it's nowhere near Vegas. And that's a common, you know that when we travel around, everyone thinks it's only an hour away, it's eight hours away or so. Just east of Tahoe, but Sparks is, I think it's the fifth largest city in the state of Nevada. It's around a hundred thousand people, we just did the census, so we'll give those exact numbers fairly soon. We can see the map behind us, that's the city of Sparks.
Yes, for those watching the video.
Uh, I represent the downtown core, um, part of the industrial. It's the original part of Sparks, um, Sparks was founded in nineteen oh five. And there's some original homes that are over a hundred years old down there. Uh, my current home is seventy plus years old. And that's just, that's, that's Sparks, so Sparks is made up of a lot of industrial. You know, we do have two casinos, we have Golden Eagle, which is the largest artificial turf installation on the west coast. Where you can play softball and soccer and football, that's out there in Wingfield.
Okay, okay.
And you know, so there's a, it's fairly diverse, it's a, it's a bedroom community, there's a lot of people, you know, it's a lot of homes. It's not all just a business industrial park, it's a, a lot of houses.
Right, okay.
That's good old Sparks, that's uh, you know, obviously that's where you grew up many years, that's where we met.
Yes, I am, yeah, yeah, growing up in Sparks for sure, on the uh, I'm not in Ward one.
You're not.
Yeah.
Well, your parents' house is in Ward two.
Yeah, right on the border almost, yeah.
Yeah, right there and went to Greenbrier, well you showed up in fourth grade at Greenbrier?
Okay, yeah, we can talk about me a little bit here.
Let's go!
So this is, this is, yeah, I do, we've definitely known each other for a while.
Yes.
My family moved to this area, technically I moved to, I think, it's still Sparks, like El Rancho Drive is still Sparks.
Yeah.
That was third grade.
Okay.
And then I moved to this, this area that my parents are still in, um, that was sixth grade.
Oh, sixth grade, okay.
That's when I joined up at the Greenbrier.
Got you.
Elementary.
Got you.
And I think, I mean, we didn't quite know each other at that point. You were, you were, you know, I was a new kid, I was a new kid, joining in the last year, when all these other kids have been there for, you know, six years together, so. Took me a while to break into the cool kid group, but.
You had a pretty good boot on your soccer.
Yeah, it always comes down to the uh, at recess.
Uh huh, at recess.
Playing soccer and my one trait was the guy that would just kick it with his toe.
Yep.
Super hard and uh, clock some people on occasion in accident, but yeah, good times. Yeah. So that's, okay, so what I wanna talk about with you, that I found, that I think is interesting. Cause like you and I have, cause we went to the same middle school.
Yep.
We were in different zones for high school, so you went to Sparks, I went to Reed. And then found different reasons to connect, and I'll call it adulthood. Uh, so we can talk about all of that, but I guess I wanna start with, kind of like who you are now and what you're up to now is kind of fascinating to me because, as life goes on, it's cool seeing people you know doing stuff they love and stuff and making, making a difference in their own ways and following through with uh, in paths that like, that I'm not familiar with at all, so. I don't know where to start there, but let's talk about, let's talk about how, okay, first of all, city councilman. Second.
Term.
Second term.
Yep.
Alright, so, where do you want, do you wanna talk about getting your second term? Or do you wanna talk about first term, or like, we can go further back into getting, yeah.
Well, we'll go to first term, so when I first ran, it was in two thousand sixteen, um, yeah, I wasn't, you know me pretty well, I wasn't class president, I was more class clown, like definitely just, that's who I was. Wearing shorts like I am today, every day, just a casualist could be, yeah. So I decided to run, you know, it wasn't, I wasn't mad about a speed hump, I wasn't mad about like a traffic light. I wasn't mad about like one issue. I ran because I loved the city of Sparks, I was born and raised here, I wanted to give back. I didn't even know we got paid for this job, I thought this was a volunteer job, I thought it was part-time, it's not part-time, it's nowhere close to part-time. And I literally Googled how to run for office, like it's a short story, like it was an interesting, interesting event. I was twenty-six, my other two opponents were twenty-five and twenty-seven. Um, I ran under the nonpartisan party, even though it's not a party. One opponent was Republican, one was a Democrat, and on paper, I should not have won, I got outraised by a lot of money. But it was, it worked out, definitely the time, the door knocking and just getting out and down, you know, being from the community helps a little bit.
So yeah, let's, cause we got some time here, I wanna, I wanna dig into all, okay, so I'm very fascinated. I'm not a big political guy, I don't know if you were prior to jumping in.
Nope.
Right, I do like the, I do like how you put it with, it wasn't really like, being upset with tech, like the system, or like, there wasn't the negative that pushed you in, it was a positive that pushed you in.
Yes.
That's beautiful, um, and I, I got frustrated with like the, the party kind of stuff. So how did you, how, okay, what did you do, why nonpartisan? For you personally, and then we can talk about what you did, maybe that was different, or how, yeah, how did it?
So, I, I, at one time, when I was younger, when we were in high school, when, you know, our senior year, we were able to vote for the first time. That's just how the presidential cycle happened. And I, you know, I wasn't politically, I didn't watch CNN, I wasn't like, I didn't, that wasn't me in high school, but I voted, I definitely voted every election. And so I actually was Green Party way back in the day for Ralph Nader.
I kinda remember that, yeah.
Nader's an interesting character, it's a whole nother, like, that could probably take up our two hours. But he switched parties in twenty twelve, and in my head, I was like, dude, parties don't matter anymore. I guess, that was just one person I saw that just switched, like, well, if you run for presidential, like that's, the top of the top of your party theoretically, and you switch parties the next year, or next cycle. I don't know, it made me start questioning parties, and I think there's good and bad with both of our current two-party system. But I do think that we, you know, I think we need a better middle spot. Like, nonpartisan part, I, I, I call it a, a party, but it's technically not a party on paper, but it is a party.
By definition, it's not a party.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a, it's an identity, I don't know, it's a, it's a category of its own, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, it's the fastest growing party in, in our area. You know, people can find middle ground, you know, we can all, we can, we're not all gonna agree on everything, no matter what, and we shouldn't. But we get to a point where I think we're so divided that people want, they wanna find the positivity, not just focus on all the negativity all the time. And I, I love the nonpartisan party, nonpartisan group, whatever.
Sure, sure.
But what, you know, there's, there's sacrifices I make, is I can't vote in a, um, a partisan primary. So partisan primary would be for like, say our state senators, if they were, you can, in the general election in November, you can only have one of each party to run. So if there was three Republicans running, they would have a partisan election in June, with only Republican, only Republican voters could vote for them. Same with Democrats, or if there's Whig, or um, Green or anything else, and I can't vote in those. And that, that's a sacrifice that I, I do make. There's, someday we might be able to do, it's called a, I think it's open elections, open primary. And then anyone could vote for those, for the partisan things, but that's the, that's the only I do give up. I also limit myself theoretically from ever running for a partisan position, because so many people vote based on just if you're Republican or Democrat, or whatever party you are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's number one question I get, during my election, my phone rings, they don't even, hey, is this Donald, are you Republican or Democrat? And you have to explain that I'm neither, sometimes people like that, some people don't like that at all, and you're not gonna get their vote, but.
It's a lot there, for sure, dang, alright, um.
And, and you know, I think going back to kind of the first time in twenty sixteen, I broke an age barrier. I'm the youngest councilman ever for our city of Sparks, like ever, my next youngest colleague graduated, I, he graduated high school the year I was born. And he is on the young spectrum, he's always forty-eight right now. So I definitely broke an age barrier, which is cool, cause you know, going back to like Sparks, or I've gone to Reed and talked to kids, I'm somewhat relatable. You know, even though we're ten years, twelve years older than a senior.
Yeah.
I sometimes somewhat listen to some of the same music they do, and I have Snapchat, I, you know, some of the apps that they use. We're still somewhat relatable, and that was never a career path, and I'm not saying politics is a career, but you, you can do some time and help people here, and it is a job that you could, you can do it at eighteen. Literally, you just have to be able to vote and be eighteen to run for city council, so.
Yeah. Okay, so, let's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to decide on whether or not to jump further into the nonpartisan thing, or jump into, alright, now you've declared nonpartisan. What, how did, alright, what, when you Googled how to run for city council, what kind of tips were there, and then what did you do?
Um, first one's fundraise, and that's the hardest, hardest part.
That's, that's the, that's the thing, right?
Yep, you know, it's all, it's only money, uh, it's a fundraising for sure, and fundraising's hard. It's hard to ask people for money for your own project, or you know, running for office. It's not a tax write-off, it's not, it's literally an expense, you ask people to support you and support your ideas, and you know, hopefully, have them support you because they believe in you and believe in what you'll do. But when you never, I never did anything before my first run, so it's, it's hard, it's a hard sell.
Yeah.
I raised, I think, ten thousand that election in twenty sixteen, my opponent did thirty-nine thousand. I loaned myself fifteen hundred of that money, uh, just to get through, cause I, no one else believed. I think other people believed in me, but not with their pocketbook, so, uh, that was interesting. Obviously then there's, you know, a door knocking, so as much as everyone, I'm not the fan of people coming to my door either, but it's important.
Sure, I was gonna say, let's pause there, I wanna talk about, so when you are asking for the, the donations to help. Alright, so now you, you, you see, or after raise money, and you have to talk to people about your plans, or like, how did, what did you develop? Like, how did you, what was your pitch at that, at that, a first initial time, and I'm curious to see how that's changed since and that, that kind of stuff, but.
So.
If you can recall.
Yeah, so the first time, I probably didn't have a good pitch, because I didn't get money, obviously, and so.
Well, you got, you got something, and it's still money.
There were some, but, you know, we, I raised money from my friends, my friends knew, knew me and, you know, they, they knew how much I loved Sparks, but it was hard to get that message out to people that write checks with commas. Those are the, those are the checks that you like to have. And they, they go, and I'll take anyone's money, like, if you give me five dollars and, you know, if that's all you can give me, that's just as great as someone giving me five thousand dollars, cause it, it's important, you're taking the time, you're investing your money and your time into me, and that's super cool, I, I write hand, I write hand thank you note, handwritten thank you notes to everyone on, on those. But, you know, the pitch now, I have a track record, I have four, or I had four years of already running for office, and are already serving the, the city, and you either like it or you don't. And so it's, it's an easier, it's an easier sell than trying to say, hey, I love the city of Sparks, I wanna run for city council, give me some money, and I'm gonna try to do my best, and it was just, it was way different than the first time.
And I'm gonna learn on the job and, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
For sure.
And, you know, it was, I was twenty-six years old, I was definitely not, you know, those were hard conversations to have with people, asking for money. I got a lot of no's, a lot of, like, I, I cried myself to sleep there's nights, there's nights I questioned why, why I was running for office. Cause you just get, uh, you get said no to so many times, you're, you get beat up, and you're like, this is stupid.
Yeah, like why, yeah, exactly, why put yourself out there and put all that effort into, into these people that aren't, that aren't there supporting you, and, yeah, that's a, that's a big thing. But yeah, it's, it's great coming out the other end though, and.
For sure, and, and you know, now looking, I did ten thousand for that race, and that was a citywide, so the whole city voted for me. Even in the, in the, in the primary in June, it was my ward only, I got second place. And then in November, it was citywide, and I got first place, I only won by like point four eight percent of the vote, it was super small. This election, there's a, the legislature, there's a change out there in Carson City, where now it's ward only, so my, just my ward for both. I raised, I think, seventy thousand dollars this election, and I'm, I'm running with Wayla, like, I have to talk to less people.
Right, right.
And so, but it was, way easier to ask for money, cause people already know what I've been doing, either like it or you don't.
It, it is nice having the uh, like I see, when, when you see the sign that says reelect, like that, that's like, alright, cool. That's, I feel like it's a strong, yeah, a strong case.
As long as the world's not burning, and like, you know, the things aren't falling apart, well, the world's burning, but some of the world burning is not directly from, is not from city council.
Yeah. Alright, so, okay, when I think of, a little detour here.
Yeah.
Again, me, like many, like many other people, I feel like, aren't too, too into the political world, and understand even what people are doing, and alright, it's like, alright, sweet, I'm, I'm following the presidential election, I know those names, but then there's, when you get the ballot, there's so many other categories and names and questions, and people often aren't faced with it until they're, like the ballot's already in their hands, so. What does a city councilman do?
Yeah.
What do you, you know, what, what's the, yeah.
So, it's definitely not an eight, nine to five, or you know, Monday to Friday sort of lifestyle. The bare minimum is we set policy and we set budget, and so we, we do that for city council, and so, like the city itself. So, we have city council twice a month, and so that could be, uh, land change, so zoning, so if you wanna build a casino, that would have to come in front of us sometime if we wanted to.
So it's, it's one member per ward is elected, and all of you, how many, so we have?
There's five.
Five wards in Spark, so the five of you.
And one mayor.
Are the city council.
Yep, yep.
And the mayor.
And the mayor, and so only city council votes on, on issues at city council, the mayor has veto power and runs the meeting. And so, we vote on a variety of, you know, approving, like I said, a budget, the budget's the big one. If we had to approve spending money, so Tom Warf is our sewer plant, we have to approve to spend, you know, there are always at least a million dollars at the sewer plant, the sewer plant's a very expensive place, but we vote to approve the expenditures to, for the sewer plant, or to buy a new fire truck, or to set our budget to fix potholes, or streets, or to maintain the Marina, Golden Eagle. Uh, so there's a thousand of like individual items, or, and then also, now it's city council, but if you have a complaint, so like, if one of our neighbors had a complaint about a pothole or a street light out, they could call me, then I would direct them to staff to get it fixed. And then I also serve on eight other committees, um, just in my political capacity. I serve on nonprofits, I think I have two or three nonprofits, I serve on, but that's me being Donald Abbott, not me being Councilman Abbott.
Separate from the position.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, okay.
Um, I think the position kind of ties with, cause they, you know, it helps knowing people and knowing people in different areas. But then I serve on, like I said, eight other, I think it's eight other committees, like Parks and Rec, the sewer plant, regional planning, flood project, uh, Washington seniors, Sparks, Sparks seniors. The Sparks Senior Board is actually one of my campaign promises from twenty sixteen, that I, I got up and running. And it's our first time we've ever had a Sparks Senior Advisory Committee in Sparks.
Whoa.
So that one's, that's definitely one of my passions is seniors, so we serve on all those committees. Those either meet, uh, monthly, bi-monthly, or quarterly. And so that's, that takes up a lot of your time, it, it's almost like a college class. So you know, your college class is two hours long, but you have six hours of homework or prep to kind of get ready for that. That's kind of the same in this world.
Okay. Okay, so, alright, that makes, that makes sense, the, so you're developing, the city has a budget, and you're a part of the team that helps figure out what we're gonna work on and what the priorities are, and then where, how do you personally make your decisions, how do, what influences you, and how do you, how has that changed? And from the beginning to now, like what, how, how is that, that's gotta be interesting.
Yeah, so you know, I have my core beliefs, you know, on a variety of, you know, if we're talking about the budget, or whatever, whatever item it is. But we get public input, and you know, public input can either be one phone call or one email to a hundred or more. And so, you know, taking those in, that allows you to kind of get both sides to whatever you're voting on. And not everything's super controversial, but there are some items where you're not getting the whole truth from either party. And so it's nice to hear both sides, and you know, I try to keep an open mind, even, you know, I, I had a, I had an issue where, I had my, I wouldn't say I had my mind made up, but I definitely thought were, I was going to vote a certain way, and then just hearing public input out of the meeting, I was like, I don't think this, I don't think, I don't think the yes vote is the right way anymore, it was no vote either way. But, yeah, so, you know, I, you can still switch, you know, up until the moment. And then there's days where, you know, you do the best you can with the information you have, and you learn something new nine months later. And you can't do anything about it, cause the vote's already.
Yeah, cause I, I could imagine it's difficult balancing, here's what I believe, and but then again, you've been elected by your ward to follow through with what they believe.
Yep.
So then I, I try to imagine, alright, now you've got the squeaky wheels versus the people that aren't speaking up.
Yes.
So how, how do you get past, like these people are the ones calling in? Do you, I guess it might be like a case by case thing, but do you go out and try to seek more context on a thing from people that aren't speaking up, to see if it's really, if that's the whole truth, or if that's just?
You know, hmm, I think, I, I definitely made phone calls to people that I'm like, is this really a problem? So I say if it was a state effects bars or something, and so I got one bar owner saying this, I'll call the other bars, but hey, is this a real problem? And maybe it is, maybe it isn't, or, you know, maybe it is a problem, but it's not this extreme. Uh, cause sometimes, yeah, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but sometimes the squeaky wheel's just squeaking to squeak. And the silent majority, a lot of the time, they don't want, they either don't wanna take the time to reach out, they don't think it'll matter. Um, which is sadly a very common answer, and um, I would disagree, I think it does matter to reach out, you know. If you reach out to me with an email, phone call, I'll email you back, I'll call you back, I'll text you back. I have people that write me handwritten notes, I'll handwrite a note back to you, actually type them actually now, cause my penmanship's so bad. But then I'll sign them, but it's still me.
Yeah, yeah.
Writing up, and so, the, the, you know, I think, I think there is kind of a case by case on what the issue is. And you kind of know what the problem is, you know, so, we have speeding all over, it's our number one complaint. And if you tell me there's speeding on a street, I get it, I know we have that problem. But then if you tell me there's speeding on this other street, it's kind of questionable, like, that's probably a bad example, but. Cause we didn't, like I said, but you, you kind of have a little experience of what the problems are, cause you know, if one person's complaining about speeding on a side street, like that's unreal, there's gonna be more than one person. You're gonna have multiple people, or we have abandoned vehicles, that's another big problem, is people just stealing cars and just dropping them. Pulling whatever they want off and leaving them. So.
So kind of, alright, so you know it's an issue, and multiple people are, are speaking up about it, and that's kind of how things get on the radar.
Yeah.
So I do, it is helpful to know, I guess, I don't know if it's you personally that it, alright. I like the idea that speaking up does matter, and somebody will hear you, and ideally, the person cares to hear you. Cause I know, like, let's say, I've lived in LA for two years now, and I know, this whole COVID thing down there has been, been shaky, I don't, I don't know much about how it's been going on up here, but like, let's just say with businesses being asked to close and making those huge decisions that are happening, I don't know who lands on them, but I know, I've heard other podcasts where like restaurant owners will come on and talk about, like, we were never talked to about like how to best handle our situation in our industry, and we're being asked to close down, and we're being asked to like put up these glass barriers, we're being asked to do social distancing, we're saying yes to all of it, we're working it, we put sixty thousand dollars into our restaurant, and then the next day, once it's all done, they decide to close us down. And it's like, well, why did, like, what, tell us what you want, cause they're just being pulled in every direction, so I don't know. In the, in their cases, they're talking about how they're trying to reach out, and they're kind of just being spun around and that kind of stuff, so I don't know. I guess we, yeah, whatever that brings up for you.
Yeah, no, um, you know, the whole, I don't, and so like, I could tell you what's happening up here for COVID, but I couldn't tell you in California, like, same world, you know, I know you guys are still shut down, that's all I really know. But, you know, the shutting down of businesses is not a, you know, that's from the governor.
Yeah, it's state.
And I think, I think communication could be better across all those lines, uh, from, you know, from the governor's office, you know, to us. Cause when we, when he goes on, we're getting it live, like I'm finding out almost about it too, right there. And so, you know, the businesses, we've been thankful that we haven't had really any shut, we, we shut down earlier this year, but everything.
That was like, that was like a big nationwide shutdown, almost, that was, that was the big one, yeah.
Like in April, or issue, go or take, but all of our businesses have been open still, and you know, I'm big on supporting local businesses.
Yeah.
I've, I, I've been to every restaurant in the city of Sparks, there's a hundred ninety-nine of them, I've been to almost every public business there is. Um, and I know a lot of the business owners for that, for that reason. And you know, now, now more than ever, people are actually coming out, you know, obviously some people are, we are closing businesses, there's no doubt at all, there's, my, my dry cleaner's closed, and you know, there's almost no need for dry cleaners, cause we're not, I'm not wearing suits and ties very often anymore. You know, it's, and so there's some businesses that are closing, but we got other restaurants that are flourishing. And it sounds crazy, but people are just all about supporting, like, Sinbad, Sinbad Hot Dogs. I've never seen so many people there my entire life till COVID, and you're just outside, like, or to-go orders, they're just busy. And so, I think for, for you guys in LA, it's a little different, cause your population's so high. You know, I, I don't know the, I don't know the number, how many council members or how they work at, you know, throughout the city, there's like a, you know, do they represent five hundred thousand people, do they represent two hundred fifty thousand? And those are hard numbers to, like, if everyone in my ward called me, that's twenty thousand people. Like, that's hard to maintain that, but not everyone does, uh, and so you know, I'm sure someone's listening when they reach out, but it's, it's hard, it's hard to get ahold of someone if, you know, with the whole world falling apart and COVID and.
For sure, they, the population plays a big part, you know, definitely, LA is, you know, it's LA and New York are the uh, the, the big pockets, and it's, it's interesting seeing how things are playing out, and it, but yeah, just being that the fact that you're witnessing stuff, let's just say witnessing aspects that normal people don't get to witness, even though sometimes you're getting news at the same time that the general public's getting news, like it's a weird, it's a weird system, but uh.
And so we have, you know, people that are going out, OSHA is going out and inspecting businesses. Me and our mayor, Mayor Lawson, we actually went out to some of the businesses that got warnings from OSHA or from our code enforcement. And we just checked in, like, hey, you know, we understand, you know, you know, there is the whole mask, the whole social distancing, you know, capacity, you know, we're just trying to get through this, we're trying to keep everyone open, and we just checked in, and that was something fairly unique, you know, for us to, and we spent half a day, um, just going out there and just checking in with businesses, and we couldn't, we didn't hit everyone, we hit, I think, ten businesses, ten businesses that day.
Okay, okay.
Just tried to check in and just.
And it was kind of like random businesses, or was, it wasn't, uh, from what you're saying, was it that this business came on the radar because they weren't following the guidelines? And then you checked in with other ones from there?
Yeah, so, that business got a warning for not following the rules somewhere, and that could have been even a customer not wearing a mask or something, they weren't enforcing. And we stopped in, you know, a couple of months after it, just to check in, you know, hey, you know, we know, we, you know, things happen. You know, how was the whole process, you know, was everyone nice to you, um, you know, how?
Yeah, whose fault is it?
Yeah, yeah, so, that was something unique that no, I don't, it wasn't normal for us to do, we just did, just tried to check in, and you know, we're trying to keep our businesses open.
Yeah, and that inspired the further check-ins from theirs, okay, cool.
Check in and, and try to support, and there's still bad apples, there's bad apples in the city that are just not following rules, and you know, sadly, people are dying from COVID, and I don't think it's hurt them, or they hasn't hit them yet, you know, they only buried a friend yet, or something, or someone they know.
Right, right.
Yeah, but some people are, I'm making a dollar or two right now.
Everybody, every, it's a classic, um, surviving, yeah, survival of the business, survival of the, your own family and priorities, and yeah, yeah, definitely.
And there's also, you know, there's other ways to, to keep money coming in while trying to survive, you know, your business and keeping people alive, but.
So how, I guess, alright, I don't know where to, alright, we can talk about going back to getting, getting elected the first time, and the door-to-door, or talking about going through the reelection process during COVID. Talking about going through the reelection process during COVID, because that was probably.
Way more interesting.
Definitely interesting.
Yeah, can I hit on both of them quick?
Yeah, yeah, please.
So you know, twenty sixteen, that election, like, so you know, we're Googling how to run, when I, there's a two week filing period to run for office, like. It's in March, if you either, it's thirty dollars, um, you either sign up during that two week period or you don't, like, that's it, there's, that's. Yeah, a window, it's a good word choice. So I woke up on the first Friday of the first, of that first week, so yeah, the Friday of the first week. And I decided to run for office, I had no plan, I had no logos, literally nothing made. Just kind of winged it, went down to the bank, got fifteen two dollar bills and I, two dollar bills are lucky, so that's thirty dollars. Paid that, um, I met my first opponent that day, the other one, I showed up Monday, you know, that was a a normal election where you go around. Your your rooms like this, where you have other business owners that are sitting on committee. You know, like I'm sure there's a committee in, you know, in your world of producers and that are probably have a political action committee is what they would be called. That are supporting candidates that are probably supporting the film industry somehow, however.
Like lobbyists, wait, that's, that's, that's the term?
No lobbyist, who would lobby to elected officials to get support on various items? So you guys could hire a lobbyist to lobby to an elected to support the film industry more. Sort of thing, but you'd also want to probably support a candidate that already supports the film industry first off.
So it's kind of like pre lobbying.
Yeah, yeah, I guess you can say, yeah, you want to get people that are like minded with you in office. And so you go to those interviews and you know, they're in person. And they, I I only got one, I I went one for ten, I got, so I got nine of them were all knows, I had people telling me to try again in a couple of years, you know, you're already. And I get I wasn't, I was new, I was a green horn.
Yeah, yeah, it's the classic. How do you get ready?
I, yeah, I had to jump in, so you know, we we door knocked a lot and so that's just, you know, the typical knock dog, hey, I'm all out, I remember for city council. You know, this, this, and this, here's my flyer, my phone number, let me know if you have a question, blah, blah, blah. Go to the next door and you you know, you're going, you're hitting people that are voters, you're not just hitting random doors. Targeting people and you have mailers you're trying to mail out to. So that's a basic, that's a basic election, you're raising money to advertise however you can advertise. You know, this time, I started raising, I already knew I was running, I was gonna run for again, I announced, I had a fundraiser in twenty nineteen. So thankfully before COVID, we were already raising money and then I had my thirty for thirty fundraiser, which in my thirtieth birthday was this year. And so I did a thirty dollar fundraiser for um, my thirtieth birthday and that was February twenty six. Whenever it's the twenty eight, it might have been actually on my birthday on the twenty eighth, but COVID was just like. We weren't shutting down yet, we weren't even having that conversation.
It was the wait and see, yeah.
So thankfully I raised a lot of money before, because this election was not normal, you, you weren't going door to door to people, because people don't want to talk to you.
That will lose you votes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, so you have to have money. For the most part, you know, you're either to to do mailers or advertise other ways. My social media, my numbers, like my Facebook, when the, when COVID first, like when we shut down, they're off the charts, because people are just on their phones constantly. And, you know, Facebook advertising is a beautiful thing, you can target, I can target. My my ward, I can target English speakers, Spanish speakers, um, I do represent a large Spanish population, did a video in Spanish. We made it work, I advertise in the Spanish newspaper, Sparks Tribune, Snapchat, Instagram. Uh, billboards, uh, mailers, so many mailers, so many, and then we did literature dropping too, so instead of door knocking, you just put the flyer on their door. And walk away, um, I hand signed forty-five hundred of them and just, you know, sorry I missed you, Donald. And we literally dropped all those and so. Those interviews that I was talking about, normally in a room, we're all on Zoom, then. You know, we had debates, obviously we had debates in twenty sixteen too, we had way more debates now because it's virtual, it's so easier. Way easier to get people together.
Get you in the room, yeah.
So it was a, it was a digital election, if you didn't understand your. Digital platform, like you had to, or you had to have a camp, a team that did. Um, and you know, I'm very thankful that my team, you know, Drew Nicholson does all my mail, all my design of all my graphics. I have a couple of other buddies, I don't think, I don't think you know David or Ross, but they all went to high, yeah, they all went to Sparks, but. You know, it's just a team of people my age, just my friends that have skills that. Came back, you know, ten years later to help, to help me here, so it was a very, very different.
I was gonna say, can you, like, as as far as like a pie chart goes, I don't know if if you're comfortable with disclosing, but like. You have your budget, like what percentage is going to social media promoting, what's, what, what percentage gets the signs out there? Like I know like physical printing is a thing, like that costs money. Mailers cost, like, what's the breakdown on?
So it's it's completely somewhat public information, so we have to disclose all our expenses, where we spend our money. And where we get our contributions at, so I'm not giving out trade secrets or anything. But printing, my mailers, we probably made, we probably made ten different mailers this year, like we made a lot of mailers. And we probably spent twenty-five thousand on mailing, twenty-five to maybe thirty tops.
It's like a third of the budget.
Yeah, uh, yeah, around that. It was a pretty, pretty penny, you know, my print shop. They will somewhat credit me for keeping them in business, because all the other special events, you know, they do. Oh my goodness, Hot Dog's Nights and I don't think they do hotter balloons, they do either balloon or air race, all of our special events canceled, everyone's canceling. And that's, they do all the posters, they do all the special events, the restaurants that they print for are, you know, oh gosh, you know, we're being put on hold, we don't know what's going on. And I had an election, I had no choice but to spend money and I definitely spent a lot of money at my. Shop, which is in Sparks, that's another fun fact, is all my campaign stuff, I have a Sparks preference. Your business, if, you know, I don't understand how I can represent Sparks and not support Sparks business in my campaign.
No, for sure.
And so, you know, Snapchat, Snapchat, Facebook, Instagram was probably. I'm gonna guess around total for the whole like primary and general, probably around two to four thousand dollars.
It's smaller than I expected, actually.
You know, we got good, oh, yeah.
Like little five dollar pops here and there and that kind of range or I don't know how it works.
No, we were spending ten dollars a day usually on every ad. And so, but not, we weren't fired up the whole time, you know, you only fire up towards the election, like. Towards like, you know, the actual day of election sort of thing, to stay relevant with people. But we, Snapchat was actually, I think, one of the best ones, because Snap, you know, I was, Facebook is great. For the older people, like older, you know.
Like us and up?
Like us and up, but like even the older up. They, they like that stuff. Snapchat, those are the high schoolers that are, you know, young that, you know, I don't even, I have Snapchat, I don't even look at those. Not the stories like your personal friends, but like the, you know, the videos that they play.
I don't spend much time on Snapchat.
But like, there's these ads that play and I don't even watch them, but my, like, younger people do, that's.
Yeah, 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 that's interesting.
And so, you know, then you have billboards, you got mailers, you know, the goal is you want to touch someone, you want them to see your name seven times. The marketing goal. And then, you know, in politics, with these mailers, they look super cool, there's tons of words on them, but. They are literally designed to go from the mailbox to the trash can, seven, we say seven seconds. You know, what do I want you to read in seven seconds, hopefully my name, my name is the number one thing I want you to read.
See your name.
Um, hopefully my tagline, make it a habit, vote for a habit. And throw it away and or hopefully recycle, that's what I really want them to do. But, you know, that's.
That's interesting, yeah.
That's game of politics and, you know, it's, it's not fun, it's, there's ugly times, when I first ran. I remember someone called me Dumbo, said, and like, I don't think I have big ears, but like, I started thinking I had big ears then. Uh, someone called me a gummy bear, I smiled and showed my gums too much, my teeth, it was fun.
Well, that's mean, people are being mean. So these are just like rando people, like you're just getting like, almost, yeah, okay, well. That's just troll culture in general there for sure, that's a bummer that you have to be subjected to that, but that is a spotlight treatment. I guess, right, uh, but what, okay, so I don't know if you're gonna go anywhere from that, but what, um. The classic other game in politics, of course, is the, uh, the bashing one another game and I know. Based on obviously following you for so long, you do everything you can to not play that game. Can you talk about that a little bit, like, I'm like, being trying to be pulled in or how, how that, how that works?
You know, temptation is always there and, you know, misery loves company, you know, like the presidential races or state races. People get nasty, um, I chose not to, I chose to, I'm all about cup half full, stay positive, positive vibes, positive results.
Taking the high road, yeah.
And it was hard, there's, you know, I got labeled a racist this year, I, uh, you, you know, Mr. Mayor, old principal at Greenberry. Oh no, you were in sixth, nevermind. Either way, he was a, he was a previous city councilman, there's a, there's a story there, but. You know, we we set a quote, so this guy was my principal when kindergarten to third, he goes to Sparks or he graduated from Sparks High. But he was a city councilman when we were at Greenberry and then he was long serving councilman, a super cool dude. And he, uh, we put a mailer that said Donald's one of us and. He is a white male and I am a white male and the people, there's an op ed, an opinion piece that came out on paper. That said, I was trying to paint, that I was trying to have John say that you should vote for me because I'm a white male. And that's it, like Donald's one of us because Donald's a white male, not, what I was trying to say was Donald's one of us, Donald's one of the community, Donald's one.
He's an everyman.
Yeah, like I was trying to be inclusive and not exclusive and so it it was ugly, definitely, you know, it's.
So he thought you personally catered this slogan directly to him and this was the.
No, this is a quote from him that he said on a mailer.
Right, so I mean, the mailer was sent to many people. Not just white people.
Yes, and not just old people or young people, all people of all colors.
So he would, he received it and he's like, oh my gosh.
No, not him, it was, he was fine with it, he already, he knew the the quote, it was other people that got it, so. They thought I was trying to say that, I'm, they thought I was trying to have him say. With his quote of Donald's one of us that you should vote for Donald because you are a white.
Yeah, got you, got you.
And so definitely a stretch, you know, and I bounce all my mailers off multiple people, it's not just. You know, it's not just Drew makes it and I read it and it's done, you know, we're bouncing off five, six different people and none of us. That wasn't on our radar and, you know, we try to watch what we say and but, you know, there's things like that and. You know, it's, I I definitely, I didn't want anyone to vote for me because I'm a white male, I want you to vote for me because I'm. The community, I'm, I represent Sparks and I love it and I go to the local businesses, I go to the same grocery store that you go to, the same seven eleven. You know, I'm, I walk down the same sidewalks you walk your dog on, not anything else, so it gets nasty. And there's stuff sitting on my, it's still on my desk, that was dirt on my opponent. That people gave me, I didn't research, I wasn't, it's not my intent to do that, but people would send it to me and there's a file. And I just chose not to, because I don't need, I don't, we have enough negativity, especially with COVID this year, like, there's enough negativity in the world, we didn't need it anymore. And I'm a big supporter of being everyone kindness and end of the day, if I would have lost, I had to still look at myself in the face the next day. And I bet, okay, did you sell out yourself, Donald, for a job or did you?
Yeah, because I mean, I I guess just to clarify, regardless of COVID, you wouldn't have tapped.
Absolutely, no, yeah, yeah, no, I I I wouldn't, no matter what, there's no need.
So I, except, I didn't, I don't know if you want to talk about, or if this was a story that came up. But I remember there was a specific moment on Facebook where you did make a public post. About like, hey, everybody, this person is saying these things and I'm not gonna, I'm, I just want to acknowledge that these things are being said and I'm not gonna. Get into this, like that, I kind of, yeah.
So I got blamed for people dying from COVID at a, um, assisted living center and not just myself, the entire city council did. Too, and a mailer sent out and there was allegations that I wasn't doing anything. And so in that post, there was, it showed I did, I helped with a, uh, a senior, uh, kind of food and essentials. You know, clothing, diapers, toilet paper, when we had toilet paper shortage, we got toilet paper and we were getting, getting, dropping them off to seniors. Uh, so we talked about that, I I delivered some other stuff to seniors, I learned to sew, like, like with a sewing machine. My friends that own a wedding company, all their weddings canceled and so we started making masks. And so every mask we sold, we donated to a public, um, you know, fire, uh, fire, fire. Fire personnel or police officer or, uh, Remso, or in, we actually give them to homeless people as well, you know, anyone, anyone in the community that needed one. You know, I kept them in my trunk, if someone was walking, you know, you need a mask, and there's multiple times where I gave people a mask and so. The thing I realized is I don't, I didn't talk about it and so no one knew what we were, what I was doing. Because I I like to do good things without telling the whole world about it, so I shared that that post. Was talking about, hey, I'm doing this, this and that, um, the people dying at, that did die at a. Assisted living center, that is on the business, that it's on the personnel that are running the business, that's not a city council or a city role. To make sure that they have PPE, that's just not, that's not our role, that, we'd have to manage every business, which we, we can't do that. And so that was negativity coming my way and me putting a positive spin. Back on it and the hard thing there is you don't know who she mailed it to, I don't know who, you know, say if she mailed it to you and then didn't mail it to, say, your mother. And then I ma, I say I I make a mailer that says all those things, those pictures and send it out and I send it to your mother. Your mother never got that first attack piece and so you're making, by spending too much energy on it, you're making it a bigger deal than it really needs to be.
You're almost spreading, yeah.
You're hurting yourself, spending your own money, yeah, and so Facebook, you know, it took me some time, you know, we crafted up the post, you know, but. People, I think people responded to it well, uh, you know, it's neat to see old like, old teachers that we had, you know, that. Still live here in Sparks that, you know, a couple of them engaged on it and just people I, I, I won't say I forgot about, but. Haven't talked to in twenty years, they're coming out of the wood, well, I remember you and you were a good kid and, you know, this and that.
Cause I I think, one of the biggest things that I try to keep in mind and I look in for, and into. That I look for in other people is the the transparency of situations, I think adds a lot. To the trust factor of, once you bring me like behind the curtain and tell me, alright, this is the decision I'm making, this is why I'm making it. This is what we're dealing with, this is my response based on, like whatever, all that, all that stuff, I think, uh, I always like that approach because, well. It's again, the communication, me being, I'll just, I haven't brought it up yet, but like me being a film guy and working on set. It is always frustrating just in life in general when you're being told, like you're not being told what's really happening and you're just having to figure stuff out. You lose a lot of trust in your leadership, you lose a lot of trust in the process and all that kind of stuff, if you're not being kept in the loop. So I do, uh, I mean, I did like your your approach on that, but I wasn't, I I didn't, I didn't dig into like, wait, wait, what, what, I didn't even know what you're talking about, really.
And I didn't share the post, I didn't share her flyer or anything, you know, there's no need, there's no need to bring any more attention, because then you're spreading, you're spreading it more.
That's something that I always thought about too with, uh, I don't wanna, okay. Sometimes people want to. Let's say give pause, okay, there's, there's a. In the political landscape, when you're running, it's you versus an opponent and there's two ways to help somebody win. Right, there's the talk up one person and talk positive about one person or ding him down by talking negative about that person. Or like, alright, I love Donald, I'm gonna talk negative about his opponent and hopefully people will hate them and vote. The Donalds are out, so. I don't know, I forgot where I was going with that, but I do think about, uh, the tactics that that people use. And I always feel like, I remember now, so when. It upsets me, because like you said, the name thing, when people see the name seven times or you're trying to get your name out there. Sometimes when people are poking negative at the opponent, you're just helping their name get out there even further. And that could actually benefit them in ways, so I don't like that approach. And I usually like cringe when people that I know who are pro Donald are going negative, like you're putting their name out there, stop it. Stop it, nope. Stop it, nope.
It works, as much as I will disagree, uh I wouldn't, that's not for me, negative campaigning works. And it's.
Is it the Twitter effect? I, there, there was the doc on Netflix. Social dilemma.
I haven't seen it, but I know about it.
There's a cool stat in there where they talk about disinformation spread versus truth. And on Twitter, they did a, they did a.
Study.
Study. Where uh. Uh fake news. Travel six times faster than real news, so if you just think about mathematically speaking. Getting that spread of that negativity gets in front of more eyeballs quicker and go on the positive route. And it's hard to discern what's true and what's not and. But by the end of it, it's like, oh, well, the name of the whatever, like, yeah, so.
It's already out and then if there is that negative, you know, say, well, we'll just say it's on you at hands, so you know, Eddie blah blah this. But if there was a fake article on you and then you're like, that's wrong, that's not true at all, no one's gonna read the second article. They only, and they probably would didn't even read the first article, they just read the headline.
Yeah, they get heated and they share it and then they forget about it.
Yes, yeah, and you know, you just have to let some, it's hard, it's harder to let some of those things go, cause you're not gonna win and you're just, you're spinning your wheels on some of it doesn't. So no, it's a, politics is a fun world, it's, it's an interesting one.
So now you're, you're jumping into a second term. How long are the terms again?
Four years.
Four year term, dang.
And you can do three of them total.
Cause you mentioned the, the principal was the longest sitting.
So he pulled seventeen and a half and so.
Seventeen and a half terms?
Seventeen and a half years and then he did, I think, eight or twelve as a school board trustee. And he was a principal for twenty plus years.
So you get twelve years and then rumor has it, or I can ask you, what's, what's the goal, what's the plan?
Yeah, no, the, the current plan is run again in twenty twenty four. And then there's a conversation about running for mayor in twenty thirty. So it's one election at a time, you know, that's the long term goal.
We're doing the math, twenty twenty plus four, twenty twenty four, run again, ideally get reelected. That takes you to twenty twenty eight. And then you have to wait the two years.
To run, yeah.
But you get ramped up during that time anyway.
Exactly, you would be campaigning, you'd be raising money, you would be doing something.
Yeah, yeah, and you wouldn't be tied up with your council position at that, at that time.
But I would need a job, I would, I need a job for two years to.
You got time.
So we'll see, you know, it's.
But that's the goal, that's the dream?
Yeah, you know. You know, it's, it's a job that, you know, you can see the gray hairs, shoot, I got more gray hairs than I've ever had. And the job is a, you get beat up, it's a job that you, it's public service. And it's a super cool job, it's hands down the best job I've ever had, no doubt at all, I quit my job of eleven years after I got elected to do this. And it's fun, but you do take a beating, you know, there's days, you know, you walk into a restaurant, people either like you or they don't like you. You know, people talk and you have to have thick skin, you're not just a. Just a body anymore, you know, people look, people look up to you, people, you know, it's, it's crazy to think, I have. I have friends, I have people I know that call me a role model and I'm like, I'm just Donald, I'm just the same person I always am. But people look at you differently and people, you know, you're under a microscope all the time. My, our texts today could get searched if someone asked a certain word and I have to disclose my email. My cellphone, my call logs, all my messages, everything gets searched and. And I have nothing to hide, there's nothing transparent, but you know, I had a time where I had to disclose the word Marina. Every time I used the word Marina and it was an awkward conversation, cause you know, if I met a girl at the Marina. I had to explain my relationship with who she is or who one of my friends are and you know, so. You don't have to do that in normal life and that's, that's my normal, that's my normal.
That's interesting.
So it's, it's different, but I do love it, I do love it, so you know, the goal is mayor twenty thirty. Um I really couldn't tell you if I want anything higher, um, the higher you go up, the further you distance yourself from. Normal human beings for the most part.
Yeah, cause it sounds like mayor, I mean, just based off your description of the, of the city council life. Sounds like you're still in that same world, like you're still dealing with the city council members, you're the veto power, you're kept in the loop similar way. I don't know if there's any other tasks on top of that, but I'm sure there.
I would say more in the loop too. So no, there's definitely more, um, but you're still in the community, you still represent a hundred thousand people, which is a lot of people, but it's a reasonable number.
Yeah, and you're still trying to remind Reno that Sparks is here and, and, and we matter. Yeah, okay, so, so I guess, I, I, alright, uh, I was gonna ask about um. What uh, what are you looking forward to the most on the, I guess on the positive route with, with everything that you're pushing for with the campaign? And now you secured it and you're moving forward and of course, we're all trying to. Navigate the COVID world and see, see if we can come out and preserve as many businesses as you can and. Mental health and physical health and all that kinda stuff for the, for the community. What else, I mean, what, what's the, I don't know, I don't know what the game plan looks like.
Yeah, so you know, for twenty twenty one, you know, I think you, you hit the kind of nail on the head about keeping businesses open, we wanna. Have a flourishing business market, you know, we have new businesses opening right now during this, which.
Which is awesome.
Yeah, it's awesome, definitely they have more cojones than I do, but. Uh you know, we also have people that we need to keep housed, you know, that, you know, there's people that are, have lost their jobs and they're not affording rent. And if, you know, we did a rental uh mediation, so we did two things, we did rental assistance. Where if you were having a hard time making rent, you can get money through the CARES Act. Through the city, which is from the federal government gave us money to help keep you housed, cause if we can keep you housed there, that's way easier for us. You know, as, as a city, as a society to help you, cause then you hopefully continue to, you know, you can find a job, you know, you're not worried about housing anymore. Or try to keep you housed so you're not worried about trying to find housing, which then that creates. You know, you lose housing, you might then lose your job or you might lose custody of your kids or whatever, you know, it spirals, it spirals in there. And then we also did um, uh eviction mediation and so we worked with our landlords and our tenants. Just to, no one wants to go to court, not, it's not fun for the tenant or the landlord and so trying to keep people housed there. The senior advisory committee, we only have had, I think, four meetings since I got up and running. Um and so I wanna definitely kinda get that ramped up and going, cause you know, our seniors. There are seniors that still haven't even left their house since March that are living here in our community and you know, it's nine months of non so. Non in-person socialized. You know, and, and that's important, you know, you know, you know, my family a little bit, my dad was, you know, sixty two when I was born, he was very old, older gentleman. I grew up with seniors and you know, those are the people that are just normal, it's my normal people to talk to and hang out with and. I wanna make sure that we can help take care of them through all of this and. You know, get us back, back in action, you know, people are spending money, people are supporting our economy right now. Our sales tax numbers for last quarter were higher than last year's, which is, I think, crazy to think, you know, but. People are spending, people are spending money.
Well, cause people aren't leaving right now. They're stuck in their communities. Which may be, which may play a part, I don't know, that is an interesting stat.
Um but you know, that also hurts us as a state because we're so tourist based. We need people coming here, you know, there's a reason why as a state in Nevada, we don't have income tax and we don't have some of the other taxes that. Other states do because we make so much money from gambling and our, our, you know, the tourist side of Vegas and up here too. So it'll be interesting, you know, there's a, you know, our budget, we're not too, you know, we're. I wouldn't say we're panicked, you know, we're not looking at laying people off, we're not looking at budget cuts, we're not, when I say budget cuts, we. Aren't looking, you know, we were talking about building a new city hall, we aren't. We don't think we no longer need to do that because we have people working from home, we have now figured out that we can. You know, spend two, three days at home working and then only come into the office every two days or maybe every other week, whatever it is. And we're able to work with our less space, but.
Or I don't know if the virtual space has a lot to do with that too, where you can. Not everything has to be in person and you can save some stuff for just like, alright, I'm just gonna call you on Zoom or.
And so that's, that's probably helped us a lot, you know, cause especially with people with kids, you know, distance learning. And having to be home and I can imagine, and that's a whole other conversation, I don't know how some of the parents were able to do that this year and. Just how.
Are they back to school here or are they in, in person schooling yet?
It's in person for, oh, well, obviously it's winter break right now, but elementary school. Elementary school and middle school are in pers- I think elementary school for sure is in person, high school's not. High school's gone, well. They went last, I think last week or two weeks ago, they went digital and I think there's a plan to stay digital after they return from. Spring break or winter break. You know, all of our colleges, we were still did all virtual. Our city council meetings, everything's virtual, I haven't sat in the chambers in nine months, which there's good and bad that goes with having Zoom. You know, you don't, you don't get that, you know, the hallway talk, you know, just checking in on people, cause it's, if I ask you how your, how's your day going and. Ten other people are in the, you know, I mean, it's weird.
It's awkward.
Yeah, and so, but it's nice, you know, I, I can have an eight AM Zoom and I could get out of bed at say seven thirty, hop in the shower, put a. I can wear shorts and put a, a suit on on top and be good to go, so. Good and bad, but you know, COVID, I think. I think it's definitely, it, it's, it's hurt us, it's hurt us a lot, you know, I think mentally, a lot of people are drained, you know, I don't know if you've. I've had friends, I've had a couple of people commit suicide this year. That, you know, it, it's sucks, there's no doubt at all and people have passed away from COVID and. You know, people that are hurting financially, you know, and, but there's also the flip side where we're able to re. We don't, we're able to change how we always did things, you know, as a, as a business, as a city and, and other businesses. What was our normal, doesn't have to be our normal anymore, we're able to flip it, I think people have realized. What are some of the more important things of life, you know, family and friends and we don't have to be all. Bougie bougie and buying fancy things all day, we can call each other and check in and, so I don't know, we'll see, hopefully it stays like that.
We uh, yeah, work our way out of this for sure, fingers crossed.
We'll see, we got a vaccination going around and.
You know. We'll see where we're at next year, give it a year.
I'm hoping summer, I'm hoping into summer.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I'm not too tapped in either, but I keep hearing the rumor is that. It might not be the vaccine itself might not even be hitting the public space until like summer. Then you gotta hope enough people take it from there and all that kinda stuff, but. Alright, um, I don't know, I don't know, I'm trying to think. About. Cause I'm interested in, I mean, you've kinda talked about it a lot, I don't know how much I wanna dig more into the city council life, but. The, what the day to day looks like, um.
So pre-COVID?
Sure, sure.
So pre-COVID, you know, the day by day is.
Like I'm curious on how you hit all those restaurants and stuff, you know, that seems like the, the fun stuff.
Well, yeah, so there's way more, um, well, I don't even notice, I don't cook, I don't cook, like.
Do you know how to cook?
Eggs. Uh it's, I know, just it's a skill, I never, I don't know. It's my lifestyle, I guess, uh, so I, I eat out, like for breakfast today was my leftovers from yesterday. But um, you know, so a normal day, you know, lunch is obviously, let's, let's start at breakfast, we'll start in the morning, so. It depends on the day, every day, you know, so Monday is when we have city council and so every other Monday is a city council meeting, so council will be at two. I have my meeting with the city staff, I think at ten thirty or eleven thirty on those days.
City staff?
Yeah, so we meet with our staff of, of the cities, so like people that overlook uh. Like the planning, parks and rec, our sewer plant, um. Our lawyers, sometimes we have those meetings, never fun ones, but uh, we, that way we can ask questions. That we are going to have at city council before, it's like if I'm just not understanding why we're spending. Hundred thousand dollars on the sewer plant or whatever, like well, why, and so they can explain it. And you can ask the question again in a public forum, but if you're just not getting it, you know, it's. It's less embarrassing to ask, you know, ask the question over and over, like I just understand, but you can ask, and ask those questions from kind of behind the scenes. And there, there's not, you know, there, there's questions that you ask then, that then you wanna ask again to get it on the record. So the public can understand it probably a little bit better, cause you struggled, um, trying to understand it as well and so. There's those and then you either have meetings with, you can have meetings with developers, lobbyists, normal citizens, business owners.
And are those as the city council or is that you as in?
So we can't meet more than three of us as electeds, so if three of us went to say dinner.
Becomes this too official kinda thing?
Open meeting law violation. So you can go to dinner theoretically, but you can't talk about business, so if the three of us went and I was like, hey. We should build another Winfield, um, uh Golden Eagle or let's build another Shields. And they're like, yeah, that's a great idea, we live, we just violated open meeting law and so. A lot of those meetings are either just two of us or our mayor, so we can have two council members and a mayor, cause the mayor doesn't vote and city council, so that's. That's legal, but we can't have three, we can't have four, we can't have five, now there's days where we'll go like a fundraiser and all five of us will sit at that table. But we know, like, we're not talking business, you know, we're talking why the sky is blue or, you know, how's your day going? Yeah, the normal stuff, not work, um, and so that's somewhat difficult at first, cause you know, it's not normal. But we're, we all, we all do a good job of it, you know, you catch each other, you know, something, and no, like, no, no big deal. Uh and so then you have other, your other boards you serve on, you have those meetings, you could have meetings with those staff members to ask some questions. You know, you have your own personal life too, of just grabbing lunch with someone or, or dinner or.
Which could be seen as another meeting.
Yeah, exactly, sometimes it is, I think, um, we also, you know, we get invited to uh. Gallas and, you know, fundraisers and, you know, those type of things a lot of the time, obviously pre-COVID. Where, you know, you're showing face and you're donating to the cause or. Um maybe you're guest speaking for whatever the event is or just, you're just showing face to support an event for. You know, for whatever cause that you believe in or whatever it is, um, so it's not, and those are, those aren't set schedules, like I don't have. Sick days, I don't have vacation days, I theoretically, the only people I have to answer to are the voters that vote me in. Like I could theoretically not work and like not work, I can not answer my phone, I can't answer my calls and still get paid. There's no way to fire me unless I think there's a recall in the vote, but I had to do something pretty dumb to. So it's, it's like I said, it's, it's very unique.
How is it? I'm trying to imagine for myself, like walk. Being someone of a certain status. Being invited to a gala or a thing, it's like, alright, we just, we just want you to come. And you're not being invited because like they enjoy your.
So yes, I get it.
So it's, it's kinda weird, like, alright, I'm showing up because I have a status and I'm here to present my status. And I'm walking around and people are talking to me because I have status. Or however, I, I, I don't know what that.
So it's a hard, it's a difficult pill to swallow.
Is there any, does it feel good, does it feel like an ego where like, oh, they need me, I have power or what does it feel like?
Yeah, you know, there's days where. You know, you try to stay as humble as you can be, but the job doesn't allow you to be humble, if I don't talk about what I do or what good I do. Nobody knows and nobody cares, there's no reason to keep me around, if you don't, if I don't talk about me. Going to those events, how I made it right in my head is I'm not just one person anymore, I'm twenty thousand people. I represent twenty thousand people wherever I go, cause I represent my ward and. Me, there's one person or there's twenty thousand people and. Cause I represent my ward and me, there's one person or there's twenty thousand people and so I'm, you know, I'm. We're seeing a whole bunch of people, so that makes more sense in my head, why are we invited to some things? And, you know, we have a conduit, if I go to your special, your gala and you, I find out that. You can support homeless animals, let's say, you know, maybe whatever, um, homeless kids. And then there's someone else, two months later, it's like, hey, I wanna support, you know, this cause, or I, how do I get involved here? You're able to have that information to pass it on, so you learn a lot at those events, and then they're, you know, they're good to networking. Cause it's not what you know, it's who you know a lot of the time, um, and that helps a lot. Just be able to connect people, and I think that's the cool part is, you know, there's people that we grew up with that have reached out to me and I'm able to connect them to resources.
Yeah, that's a good way of putting it though, where you're, I I could see how it can make you feel better, or, or it's, I'm here. Not because, yeah, I'm like, regardless if you want to be there or not, like, you're doing your due diligence of supporting the people that put you in that position in the first place. That does feel good, I'm sure, it feels better for the soul, cause I think about. Cause of course I'm pursuing the film side and I think about like. My big dreams of working my way up as a, as a director in film and sometimes even now, I, I, I worry about like. And I don't, I, it's, I, I feel like I haven't really done much in the film world to, you know, I haven't. Made a, a big blockbuster movie or. I made a movie that millions of people have seen or anything like that, so, but I still get a feeling sometimes, I'm like, oh, are people. Just being nice to me because they want me to cast them in a film, or people just being nice to me because I think I. I am like, you know, you, you invest in people's, um, potential. So like, oh, Eddie's on the track to someday being able to hire a certain position, so I'm gonna be nice to him now. Like, it's kind of like that, I feel like it's a similar thing, but in this one, I'm not representing, I wouldn't be representing. Yeah, I'm not being voted into that, it's just, you know, you work towards that, so I. Ideally, I'm hoping I'm in a position where I'm being invited to stuff because. For status, but it feels weird.
Oh, definitely.
It feels weird, so I'm trying to, I'm asking you because I'm like, all right, how does he work through it and? Cause you're only gonna, I'd, same, same on your side, if, if you go through with your, with your plan. Being the mayor, I'm sure you're only getting invited to more stuff and bigger stuff and. You're shaking hands with who knows.
No, it's. So some of the keen of mind when you're talking about people being nice to, I never knew I had so many best friends until I got a life. I, there's people that tell people that they've known me for years, I had someone come up to my table last night. And told my mother that he is my best friend and that he loves me dearly, I have met this guy twice in my entire life.
And you were sitting there while it was being said?
Yeah, I'm sitting there, she's right there too, and I'm like, I told her, I was like, mother, I've talked to this guy like twice my whole life, I've texted him once. Like one text message and, um, whatever.
That's interesting.
And, and people, you know, people will. Use my name as kind of, they named drop my name, you know, they go to restaurants, they go places where they know I go and. And sometimes it's good, sometimes it's appreciative, cause they'll be, oh, you know, Donald Abbott sent me here, and like, there's businesses, like if we. A new sushi, there's a new sushi spot that opened, I know by me checking in, they're brought people there, which is good, that's what I want. Yeah, supporting our businesses, but then people sometimes go places and use my name to try to get a discount. Or try to get things and, you know, that's, and they're, oh, I'm really good friends with Donald, and I'm like, and some blast me, I'm like, I don't know that person. Yeah, there's a Facebook look up on Facebook, I'm like, oh, I was a face, Facebook friend, that's it, I don't know. And I'm, I try not to, you know, keep a small circle, but I definitely, I'll talk to anyone, like, you know, I.
Yeah, you're a friendly guy by, by, by just general nature, yeah.
And I don't think I'm any better than anyone else, you know, I, I might have a title, you know. It's, the title's the title, it doesn't define me, it doesn't make me who I am, I'm still Donald, um, and obviously councilman habit some days too. But it doesn't, I'm not a councilman habit seven days a week, but I am, I'm, I am when I'm in public, I get it. But I try to just be myself.
I was gonna say, for the record, I have known Donald for years. I'm just kidding, yeah, but, uh.
I get it.
All right, um, okay, yeah, that's, uh, that's gotta be weird for sure.
It is, it's definitely, and I would think that sometimes I get invited to things, people, you know, they. They either have met me already, they like me, or they want to meet me to help spread their message, um. Cause you know, we, end of the day, we're conduit, we're, we're the ability to spread a message if, you know, with social media or even. The amount of people I know, I guess someone.
Yeah, or you could bring it up at a meeting or something, yeah, yeah.
Like, if you were here locally, and someone's like, hey, I need someone to make a video, like, well, you can call Eddie, like, and that's, you're the only person I know really is. Kind of does that world.
I'll, I'll fly up for you. Yeah.
So, no, it's, and I never thought, never thought I'd be here, but.
I guess, I don't know, I'll, I'll try to transition out of this topic, but I did wanna hit up one more thing that I'm sure. Comes, I'll call across your desk quite frequently, but I don't know how many people. Try to complain to you about stuff that you have no control over and how you kind of smooth that over, I.
Yeah, so it happened, it happened a lot this year, a lot with COVID, you know. Stimulus checks, that was a big one, is people, you know, I'm running for office, I'm mailing mailers to people. All the time with my personal phone number, with my email that I answer both of them. And they're like, hey, you know, I, how are my stimulus, blah, blah, this, and I don't have that answer, cause I, I'm not into.
That's federal.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not anywhere close to that, and you have resources you can pass them on to, but you're not able to actually help them directly. Or say if there's a pothole on, well, it's probably a bad example, like McCarran, we don't snowplow McCarran. Um, I don't, probably no one knows McCarran Boulevard.
McCarran's a major.
Pyramid Highway is the same, the state of the, state of Nevada maintains those roads, even though they're in the city of Sparks, city limits, we don't maintain them. And so, you know, there's weird things like that, that people have a complaint, but we're not, we're able to kind of help, but not. Through us, we have to go through the state and it's up to the state to, to fix it, so. It depends on the issue, a lot of the time, if it's a state issue, you can then refer the people to their state representatives. Their assembly member or senator, and then now it's up to that person, that individual. At that elected position to help the person that's reaching out.
Okay, yeah, cause I guess like there's a specific example I could run by you that I'm not even sure, I'm like, Donald doesn't have the answer to this. And it came from somebody you may know, I won't drop the name on the podcast, but the issue comes. See, you mentioned Golden Eagle, it's not even your, it's not really your jurisdiction. Golden Eagle isn't your war.
It's not my war, but it's in the city of Sparks, I'm at.
Yeah, all right, so there's an issue when riding a one wheel, you're familiar with a one wheel, I know you've had one in your possession for.
Last week.
So the one wheel, you'll sometimes get called up, called off, called up by like the, the parks people saying, hey, that's a motorized vehicle. You can't ride that on the sidewalks or whatever the case may be, and it's like, well, is it a motorized vehicle, is it not? Can I ride my one wheel? So, like, who makes those rules? Is that something that?
That we do.
And then you're like, okay, I have experience with the one wheel, I can, I say we should allow one wheels or.
Yeah, then we, we have to go to city coun- well, staff, we'd have to give direction to staff to amend our city code, and then we'd have to vote on it at city council. To change it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, I, I, I thought about that too, cause I actually rode the Marina on mine, and no one brought, said anything, but I was like, well.
Oh, some controversy.
Yeah, some controversy, so, but, no, I haven't, also, you know, a one wheel is not. You know, we have electric bikes that people ride, the Marina, and ride on the river, which are supposed to be non-motorized, and. You know, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
I haven't seen it being a problem, problem yet, I haven't heard about it yet either, but.
I just know a certain individual that has problems with it.
I haven't heard about it yet, but now.
But maybe, maybe that individual should make some calls and see if they, see if that can come up, but, uh. All right, well, I did want to take some time to, um. I don't know, like, we can work our way backwards a little bit, this is still kind of staying to, this is a little bit city council-ish, but it's not. I did wanna dig into your love of the city a little bit. Cause prior to, the, the reason you running for city council made sense to me was cause like, oh, Donald already. Volunteer so much time at the Sparks Museum, and you're always involved in lots of multiple ways with that. I don't know if you have much to, what, what do you have to say about the, the museum? I know that's a big part of. You.
So the museum definitely contributed to me falling more in love with the city than, than ever.
How did, yeah.
Um, so, mu- you know, the museum, I wanted to go to museums since I was probably like six. I remember driving past it, I'm Victorian, I never, I didn't go in until I was twenty-three, I think, or twenty-two. Finally went in, finally, I just went down, what, made it happen, and I started volunteering at the front desk and. Then I'm on the board and I got asked to be on the board and then I still am, but the museum, I love local history, I love history, but. You know, I, I, like World War Two or World War One, like that stuff doesn't fascinate me like local history, like we could walk out here. Actually, where we're sitting right now, it used to be Burgess Park, it used to be the first baseball field in the area in Sparks. Um, right here, like that's, this is a tangible object that we can look at, we can see old photos, um, you walk down the street, we can look at old houses. It's, I like that stuff, that stuff. I don't know, it's exciting to me, it's.
Yeah, it's real.
Yeah. And so.
Not that World War Two.
But they are, they, we can see them.
From our backyard, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um, and so that, that, that really, I think, just lit my fire in Sparks. And I always loved the city, but I don't think I knew how much I loved it until, until the museum, until I started finding local history, and I was like, oh, this is neat, this is neat, you know. I didn't know this was a thing.
Yeah, and the museum, for those that aren't familiar with Sparks. It's kind of like, it's, it's placed in a position that, I don't know if I call it like the head of the Sparks Downtown Strip. Like, it's right there where there's a lot of foot traffic when there's the pre-COVID and hopefully post-COVID events. That's like, that's like the main area where stuff is kind of being held for crafts fairs and all that kind of stuff. And it, and it's right there, and I know like me personally, I've only been in a couple of times mostly because.
Yeah, my birthday party.
Yeah, brought there by Donald and that's where you have your birthday party, yeah, 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 so, all right, yeah. Whatever that brings to that.
Yeah, no, so, I, definitely the museum is a special place, I think there's. A lot of excitement for, you know, a lot of our, like, our age people, where we're able to. We have friends that have kids that are now able to bring them in, cause there's museum things there, and we're able to teach people history of the area. And it's interesting to see how things repeat themselves, even in our own local community, um, you know, we used to have a trolley system. That's a conversation now is about a modern day trolley system, and we had one seventy years ago and got rid of it now, here we are talking about that again. But I don't know, the museum's a fun, special place, definitely is.
The other thing about the museum, I don't know if this is even really a talking point, but there's the, what's the name of the dude?
Last Chance Joe.
Last Chance Joe, cause there's the, uh, the John Squagga's Nugget, it's pretty much across the street. And there's the, uh, he was like the mascot in front of the casino, they were eventually, he was, I don't know how long that dude's been there.
Fifty-seven, I think it was the year.
Okay, fifty-seven.
And then he came off in twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen. We have him at the museum now, we s- we restored.
Yeah, cause they were, I don't know what the decision was at that point, cause the Nugget was like, oh, we don't want him anymore. And we're gonna, we're gonna trash him and the city was like, whoa, whoa, we'll take him.
So it's actually the museum that said, not the city, the city had nothing to do with it, um, the second owners of the Nuggets, so John Squagga sold the Nugget. And his second owners wanted to do the front, redo the front facade, and they were just, we're gonna throw this guy away, and we're like, no, hold up, we'll save him. So we saved him, we have a license plate, the Heritage of Sparks license plate, which has Last Chance Joe on him, or on the plate. We make a, um, a portion of the contributions of you maintaining that plate to the museum, you can't get the plate anymore, so, so it's limited edition now.
Nice. Yeah, Last Chance Joe is a mining.
Mining dude.
Inspector, I mean, I should, I should know, I should know, I, I.
He's a cowboy, he's a cowboy.
He's, oh, he's not a miner? He's gotta be a miner, he's got a.
Yeah, he's got, he's got the guns.
He looks like he mines, or at least pans for gold on his.
Well, I think that's the, the whole thing is, you know, the nugget, panning.
It's a gold nugget, yeah, yeah, I don't know, you got some sun in your eyes.
It's all good.
Okay, so prior to, prior to. The museum. I don't know, I. Let's talk about, let's write, let's just do some reminiscing on, on the good times growing up. I mentioned in text that would probably bring up the Park Friends Group. There's a, uh, there's a specific park. That we kind of like called dibs on when we were growing up, and have some good memories there, and, uh.
Yeah.
That was, that was a thing.
Good old Longford Park.
Longford Park.
Longford Park, uh, do you know what it's named after?
Shucks, I feel like I've heard this story before, but no.
So Longford Park is named after Longford, Ireland, uh, which is our sister city, the city of Sparks. So we twinned, we're the, it was the first twinning of an Irish city and a US city ever, and it was, I won't say it was nineteen seventy-five. It was Eyes of March, March fifteenth, nineteen seventy-five, we twinned, you know, we sent the mayor and council over there, they sent their people over here. Um, they, we don't have anything in Longford named after Sparks, or at least not yet, and Longford is no longer a city, it's a county. So it'd be just like, for us, it'd be Washoe County now sort of thing, so it's a larger area, um, I was actually able to go there. Twenty, November twenty seventeen, I was able to go down to Longford and meet their, they're called counselors, so it's the same thing as what I do. So, yeah, that's what Longford is named after, and so there's a little plaque that talks about it. But no, going to Park Friends, you know, that was, as our childhood, we grew up playing, learning how to play every sport, I think that we know how to play at Longford.
Yeah, so what we would do, I, I, I don't know, I don't spend. I guess that's another thing about COVID too, that I feel bad for, like, I, I think I was at an apartment for a bit in LA. Where they closed off all the, uh, plane equipment, and I'm like, shucks, kids can't come out and play, like, play is not being advised right now, like, that's sad. Cause it's hard enough getting people out and getting outdoors and stuff, but I know for us, we play football. Soccer, I think we, I don't know if this was college or not, I don't know if we did frisbee back in the day.
Ultimate frisbee? We definitely played some at Longford Park at some point with ultimate football too.
Ultimate football. Tennis was a thing, basketball.
Capture the flag.
Capture the flag.
Uh, we built, were you there when we built the glue?
Yes, that was a legendary winter.
Snow wall fights.
I remember, uh, we have a buddy named Colin, and it was his birthday one day, I don't, I'm pretty sure you, you had to have been there.
Yeah.
I hope he was there. His birthday is like December fifth, no, I'm not gonna say what year you're calling, don't worry, um, uh, but it was like. Full on white Christmas, white December, and we're super stubborn kids and a bunch of dudes, sausage fest. And we do video games and then we would always have our football games, and we went like in two feet of snow and tried to play football. And, uh, I don't know, the things we do, trying to, trying to just keep up the, uh. What, what's it called, not the, the, um, family, like the traditions. And I, I definitely finally look back on those memories as, uh, as good times where. I don't think it's that often you keep a, keep a thing going like that and, yeah.
And, you know, we, we had that park on kind of like lockdown, you know, people, we'd have other people show up to play football against us, and we'd play. Pickup games against other teams and, you know, my, my kickball team was Park Friends, like it's, you know, uh. Mike has Longford tattooed on his forearm.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's beautiful, actually, yeah, no, it's very cool, um.
No, it's a spe- it's my favorite park, obviously, I think probably, it's a special place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Definitely that, you know.
What's your, uh, do you have a go-to Longford memory that you think about? When you, when you say Longford's my favorite park, is there a?
Automatic memory.
Regarding, I guess specifically to the Park Friends, cause I know you have more history there than just, uh.
And man, there's a thousand, I just run into my mind, would, do you, were you there when it used to be? And man, there's a thousand, it just ran through my mind. Would, do you, were you there when it used to be the pigeon coop?
Yes, we, we, you had the whole investigative thing recently where you're trying to find old photos of it and I sent you. Like a two second snapshot.
Which is super cool on you with your, your video stuff is you used to record, you recorded that, of course today I didn't show up. But you recorded sports that day. And you know, you have a lot of neat memories of us growing up on video.
Yeah, yeah, cause when I was first getting into film, I don't even know why I had that. I don't really know if I was into, I liked editing. And I didn't really know what I was doing, but I, uh, like one Black Friday, I got one of those classic camcorders and I started filming. Friend, like friend videos, I do like these compilations of like, alright. Whatever, it was like each whatever. Yeah, so I'd go to, I'd go and awkwardly shoot.
I remember the softball game. That softball game will be forever historical.
Hmm, softball.
He filmed at Rancho.
Oh, okay.
And you know, so we actually, it was our championship game, we ended up winning. More importantly, you know, one of our friends ended up, he, he died. And you know, this is the only footage we have.
Years later.
Years laters, yeah, yeah. Yeah, not that night. Um, but no, we, years later, that's the only footage we have of this guy with his voice. Well, yeah, obviously we have some other stuff like him playing, and it was his only base hit he ever got, it's literally on camera.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so it's, it's kinda cool stuff to be able to look back and so shout out to you.
Shout out to video, everybody, the the medium of, like, that's one of my, my favorite things about this too, is I like. The idea of the time capsule of the conversation is kind of fu- fun too. I imagine, I, I'm always a fan of like going back and watching my own stuff. And like reminiscing on those good times and like, oh, I had so much fun with that and. Like I did one, I don't know, you probably, I don't know, you probably don't watch my podcast, but maybe. You did?
Yeah.
Um, cause that was the cool thing with him too. I'm like, who from my family would be comfortable on camera giving a conversation? And Caesar does his whole video game stuff. So I was, I was happy with that, cause I'm like, oh, twenty years down the road, I can look back at our conversation on this cusp of, you know, the. He's three years younger, so late twenties, early thirties. And this is a similar thing too, where it's like, oh, this was Donald. At the, the beginning of his second term and uh, look where he is now or.
Or isn't. I get it.
Yeah, so I think it's fun. Um, yeah, I don't know.
I'm still trying to think my favorite memory at Park, at Park Friends at Longford. You know, definitely. Man, there's just so many.
I think about, it's not actually a positive memory. It's not a negative one either, it's just, I think about football. And we would usually just do two hand touch, but on rare occasion. We'd have a, a ruckus group that were like, let's do tackle this time. We're bros and we'd like. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm never a fan, I'm not, you know, I'm like a defensive squirmy dude. I'm not here to. Try to tackle people. So I remember, once it got to tackle, I said, alright, give Dustin the ball. He's just gonna like elbow people and.
Yep. I'll be bleeding, like always.
That was always a tradition, is you would always quite frequently in some way end up getting hurt. You like to test your limits, for sure. It's usually like an ankle injury or some sort of jumper.
Last year, my motorcycle accident was always my knee. I'd always rip the thing, start bleeding.
After?
After, it was a scar tissue, it just never was healed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, man.
You wanna talk about that?
Those were lovely days. And you know, actually that, we can, cause that accident is actually one of the reasons I have my current job. Um, if you go way back in time, so I'll try to sum it up, obviously, we're both. Noah, you know, I have my motorcycle.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we have the same bike.
Yeah, yes. I'll, I guess I'll, let me give some context a little bit. So we have, like I said, we have a history of, like, there's certain things that kind of bring us back and it's kind of nice having. The, the wide variety of things that can connect us. I enjoy that. Or it's like, alright, we can play football. I don't know if these days, if, I don't, last time we played football. I don't play football anymore, anymore either.
Played this year.
Nice, I wish I was playing.
We had a small Park Friends group for a little bit. Resurfaced.
Oh, cool. So like playing football, playing tennis, I know tennis was a thing for us for a little bit. Cause I think you were pretty good for a while.
It's okay.
Were you on the Sparks team?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I never made the Reed team, that was kind of sad times. But, so we had tennis, we had football, we had Park Friends.
Magic the Gathering?
Magic the Gathering, uh, at the certain point, we, I bought my dad's motorcycle, you had a motorcycle. We rode a couple of times together and stuff and kind of had that. And then I think, I don't know, after that was the camera, you got into photography for a bit and you had a camera before I did. And I went to you asking about like cameras and you recommended the one that you had. And I was like, alright. And then I recently just sold it, but I.
That's right, you did get the seven, seventy D, right?
Yeah, the, the Canon seventy D, um, for video. I got it for video purposes. And uh, and so we kind of had that link where you're like my first subject for my photography practicing and.
Well, my first, I think I use those photos for my campaign, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, one of those things, like you said, was the motorcycle. Um, I was never too big on, cause it was a sports bike, sport bike, it was Kawasaki Ninja, I believe. Oh, six.
Yep.
And. I got mine because I was like, you know, I'm, I'm a mild mannered dude, I'm quiet, I'm like a nerd. I need, I need something to like, that people don't expect me to have. And I wanna kind of mix it up for myself. And, you know, show people that underneath this quiet, this quiet person is actually like somebody that can, you know. Go quick on bike and be cool. So that's why I got mine. I was like, alright, this is cool, this is fun. Um, and then, I don't know if you, when did you get yours and why?
So.
I know you like being cool too, so.
I got mine in two thousand nine. I think it was spring.
Sounds right.
Cause then I bought, yeah, cause I bought my car in March and I crashed and shit. Yeah, so it was around that, around spring. Yeah, I, I, I don't know if there was a, I think it was probably just basically just being cool. I wanted a bike and they were fast.
For the chicks.
Far from, I think, I think, well, I think more guys talk to you than a chick does.
Oh, right, right, that's always a joke.
Yeah, but anyway, I got the bike. It was, it was fun, dude. I, I rode a lot, definitely. You know, that was a lifestyle is, you know, I hung out with people that had a bike for the most part. Just ride everywhere, but you know, talking about the accident. You know, I, I don't, I think most of our viewers are probably not from the city, someone born with too much details of the area, but.
No, please do, please do.
Uh, you know, good old Virginia City is a ghost town, sorta.
National landmark, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, and it, so when I say it's a ghost town, it's a tourist ghost town, you know, it's not, it's not.
People live there.
Live there, yeah, and there's bars, there's uh, craft stores and that whole thing. And so it's during street vibes, the spring edition, street rides are a local.
Street vibrations for those that are.
Yeah, like, big motorcycle gathering.
Yeah, all the Harleys coming in.
And either way, we went downtown Sparks and then we went back to my house and. My dad was in the hospital. My dad was getting a pacemaker and defibrillator put in. It was Sunday, I saw him that morning. Went downtown, went back to my house. And so my mother's at the hospital, or she probably would have advised me against what I wore. But I wore my pink soccer shorts, my muscle shirt cut out. I went up to VC, came, went to the truck route, which is just, there's no guardrails on it, so it's a windy, mountainous road. Um, you weren't with me that day.
I wasn't there, no.
And came out a corner, thought I was done with the corner, looked behind me, make sure my friends were all there, cause I was in the front. Came back, there's no guardrail, bike, went off the little ravine, it's like a ten foot ravine. It wasn't like a cliff or anything, but.
Kind of slid it, right?
Yeah, well, I slid on the, it, we, I, I got the brakes, it locked up and it slid off and I hit a mile marker. In my back and cut my knee open pretty good and got my back pretty well, but I spent four days at renowned, I had internal bleeding. I had a walker for I think two months to get around, but looking back, I remember laying there in my hospital bed, doped up on uh, morphine. Being twenty years old and like, am I gonna walk again? And it wasn't like, doctors telling me I wasn't walking. I was making this way worse in my head.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, I didn't know what was, you know, what was gonna happen. And I realized that tomorrow's not promised and that I learned to take more risk, more risk like running for office is a risk. Cause you can fail and there's, there's a lot of things you can fail at, but I'd rather fail at something and know I failed. And but more probably know that I tried instead of twenty years later, oh, I should have done this or I should have done that or whatever it is, you know, we.
Yeah, take some chances.
We hear excuses all the time, like, you know, you moving to LA is, was a chance that you took. Or you could have sat here and in ten years from now, oh, I should have moved to LA and we don't know what would have happened. You know, now you've moved, you're doing this and, you know, people just get too comfortable and you should be comfortable being uncomfortable. Um, in the right circumstance, for sure. But, you know, if you're not, um, if you're not uncomfortable, you're not growing, you're not going anywhere. You gotta try to.
So that was the, that was the start of the nudge toward like, you, you, you were realizing that maybe. Yeah, just the, then, we'll call it in your death experience.
Yes.
Changes, changes the person.
Uh huh, absolutely. Um, you know, it wasn't that, I, after that, I triggered that, I wanna run for office, but I realized. I wanna try some things and you never know, you absolutely never know and.
Yeah.
You know, life's full of risks. It's just, what risk are you willing to take? And risk and reward.
How, I don't know. How does one, and do you have any advice for people that are stuck in their comfort? Like, do you get often asked like for life advice and, hey, Donald, I wanna be like you. You, I look up to you, I'm seventeen graduate, or you know, you, you deal with high school kids. You go to, you go and do those, those photo sessions with the, with the teens and much more back at Sparks, so.
Yeah.
What uh, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, so, you know, it's ironic that you bring this up, it's probably, I think it's somewhat on the subject. So the other day I rented on Snapchat, I haven't had my car for a month, so I hit something on the freeway and ruptured. It looked like someone shot my rim, like it looks like a bullet hole through the rim. Either way, it took me a while to get my car. And so I could have sat around and complained about not having a car for a whole month and whatever. But there's no need, you know, focus on positive, don't worry about the negative.
Yeah.
And so I snapchatted, I was like, oh, I got my car back today, you know, count your blessings. I just ramble, sometimes I go on these rambles and. They're interesting, cause I actually get really good engagement from them, like compared to just posting a photo. It is what it is. But I had a guy that, so going back to my accident, I added like seven hundred people when I crashed my motorcycle. Um, cause I was just bored and I had nothing else to do. So I have a bunch of randoms on my Facebook.
On your Snapchat?
Facebook.
Oh, Facebook.
Facebook, sorry, uh, so when I post a Snapchat, I also post my Instagram, which links to Facebook, sort of thing.
You post Snapchat, which links to your Instagram, which goes to your Facebook.
Sorry, I posted my Snapchat and then I saved the video, then I uploaded it on Instagram, which is up, which is synced to Facebook.
Yes.
To do that, sorry. Um, I wish I could do all three at once, but uh, he, I was, I was rambling about being happy and being positive. And he was like, bro, you're weird. And I was like, like, he wrote, I was like, okay, like, you need some more positivity in my life. And like, I get it, and then he told me it was a joke, here or there. I hope he was watching this, I hope so. Cause he needs some more positivity, like life's way too short and I don't know why he needed to focus his negative time on something that. There's no need to waste that energy.
Trying to bring you down, yeah.
Yeah, like, it is what it is, but you know, and going back to, uh, that wasn't too far off subject, we can back to your question. About advice, you know, it's, it's literally just focus on the positivity, for sure, that's number one. I could tell you a thousand things that have gone wrong either this week, today, whatever it is, but I can tell you a thousand and one. Always at least one more that have gone right. And, you know, maybe it's not always quantity, but it's for sure quality.
Yeah.
Um, you know, life's beautiful, absolutely. We're alive, we're here and kicking, we're walking, we have water, you know, we're. We're comfortable, like, you know, things are good. Um, but life ain't perfect. You know, there's things that. We could both talk about that, you know, we could focus on, there's no need to. And I think to get out your rut, you know, it's hard. I think we all get in ruts. Still, you know, there's days I'm like, blah, blah, blah. But, you know, find something that, you know, don't, you know, I'm not telling you to go quit your job or move out or whatever, but. You know, maybe try something new when you go to the seven eleven, you know, maybe get something different on a meal. Or, you know, a thing that I was doing before COVID was reconnecting with people that I haven't talked to in a long time. So like, like yourself would be one if you were still in town, where I'd be, hey, Eddie, let's go get lunch. And, you know, we know what each other is doing from social media, but we're gonna have a different conversation in person. You'll actually be able to talk probably a little bit more. And that, that's important to surround yourself with others that are also doing, you know, reconnecting with old friends that are somewhat hopefully positive. And if they're not positive, that's another conversation, but surrounding yourself with people that are either doing. I wouldn't say more than you, but doing, doing exciting things, cause people will reflect you around the company you keep.
Which is why that person came up to your table with like, you're my best friend. And cause they're trying to manufacture that, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's a lie, don't, that's a lie into yourself. Okay, yeah, no, for sure, that's, so I like your examples though with uh, it could be as simple as. If your teen is going to seven eleven every day and getting a big gulp of this, like maybe just mix it up and, actually literally mix it up. Get your Mountain Dew, put some coke in it.
Yeah.
You know, like that's, like the nice small things, cause I was gonna jump to something big with like education and. Don't go take some TMCC classes on stuff that you don't, like sales or like stuff you know nothing about that can add to. Your life in some way or may not even add, like just.
And those are definitely things, but those are.
That's a, that's a big commitment. So you gotta kind of work your way up, but yeah. And you were saying a thousand and one things that you could mention, I was kind of thinking. Like the way I see it sometimes is uh, when people kind of vent to me about the negative stuff or whatever. It's not always a helpful thing to, that I do, but my brain automatically goes to where, where there's the flip side. It's more of, it's more of the, not necessarily that there's more positive things, but there's a positive spin on the same thing. So you give me a thousand negatives, I can give you right back a thousand positives.
Got you.
About the same scenarios, so.
And it's hard, it, you know, I think it's easier for us to do it when we're outside of that circle, like, you know, if we're. Say I lost my job, I'm gonna think the world's falling apart. Yourself, you could find the positive and sometimes it's harder.
Cause there's, there's opportunity there.
No, there is, um.
Yeah.
I had a conversation myself about if I lost my election, what would I do? And I'll tell you, I had fun things, like, I had a plan. And, cause it was exciting. Uh, I got one, I'm happy I, I got re-acted, don't get me wrong.
Right, right.
But it would be exciting to do something else, to, to have a change of the plan and a wonder closes, twenty more open. And it's gotta be flexible, you can't.
Cause I know it's tough, like if you, if you, if I try to imagine you at the high school and talking to some kid. And being like, Donald, I don't know what I'm doing. What am I gonna go to school for? My parents want this and my dad wants this, my mom says this. And you're saying this right now, like what do I do? And when you don't know what you want, it's very difficult to make decisions. And I don't know. Cause like, I don't know. Really how to advise people to, to kind of figure out what it is. That they are living for.
I get you.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I think both of us have, I don't think we really knew what we wanted to do until. I joked, I still don't know what I wanna do until I grow up. But, you know, I went to school for H Jack, you went to school for mining. We have degrees that obviously probably help us in some roles of our current life, but they're not the job, they're not the careers that we. Have degrees in at all. But you know, going back, those were all experiences that got us to, you know, if you never went through your program at UNR. I, maybe you wouldn't be here. You know, maybe if you, you getting into UNR allowed you to, cause I think you used to rent cameras to UNR, right?
Yeah, would, yeah, I would utilize them for editing resources or, yeah, that kind of stuff.
And so if you never got into UNR, if you were just, hey, I don't know I wanna do and I'm not gonna go to UNR, you might not ever got into UNR. To get into cameras and get into some editing and to get this passion you currently have. And, you know, I would say the same thing about, I'm not saying. I guess, I, sorry, I'm not saying that we wasted our time or wasted any of our resources by going down these routes that. Don't directly have, impact our current life, but they do, they absolutely did direct us down a path that got us to where we are at today. And I think, you know, I think safely, I say we're both happy with our lives, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's a tough thing for sure, cause you. You you make the decision on I'm gonna go to school for mining engineering and I trust just based off. Like I trust that along the way I'll find I'll find the answer and then thirty years down the road. Like who knows, but yeah, um. I think about one experience I had in mining that really pushed me was there was a um. I give him a shout out to uh Royce Foyer was also doing mining engineering. And we interned for the same mine during that break between junior and senior year of college and uh. We would do the drives on like weekends sometimes from like Winamaka to Torino to get, you know. Get out of get out of the pit um and we would have conversations about what we actually wanted it to do and he would talk about like, oh, I wanna. Do movies and film and all this stuff, I'm like, hey, I wanna do movies and film, so we're just two dudes doing mining engineering and working on it. Working on an open pit mine, gold mine, talking about this and he was kind of he was kind of like a, he nudged me in the direction. And I was like, oh, like that was just really random, you you never know. So it's cool stuff.
And so yeah, I don't think you can ever give anyone direct legal advice or legal advice, life advice. Legal advice if you're a lawyer, but life advice cuz you know, I think you just have to fake it till you make it sort of thing. You know, just go with the flow and and you have a passion to learn, um you know, that's a that's probably one of my um. Oh, I can't think of the word uh. Things with people uh where you know, they're not happy with their current job or they're not happy with their current life. But they only wanna work eight to five and they wanna call in as much as they can and you know, I always. You know, I I think you worked when you went to school too and there were long hours, you know, I remember days of. You know, not even just going to school, but after hours, after five PM, you were working on something to either better yourself or better your life or. You know, either learn a new skill or networking or whatever it is. You know, and and those are hours you're not getting paid for, you know, after five. But you have to learn those new skills, learn whatever else is going on to to further your life.
Yep, if you wanna, you gotta create the change, as they say, it ain't gonna change without that work.
And there's people that don't want to and that's okay.
Well, they don't wanna do either one, they don't want the life they have and they don't wanna put work effort into a different life, so.
Needs all of us, we need all everyone in the world to make the world work. And not everyone can is going to be. You know, CEOs of Fortune five hundred companies, that's just not how the world. This won't work. But everyone should try, but. You know, and try to learn from your advice, be okay with failure. Sucks a lot, like you were talking about being transparent earlier and being able to look at what you did wrong and how you could do better and. Take your your failures as a as a learning.
Yeah, yeah, not pretending like you've never failed too is a nice, is a nice thing.
Every time I still still haven't got it figured out, but.
It's okay, sometimes others are just better than you. Um I wanna talk about. Uh speaking of trying things out, um the abitography. The photography track that you went down for a little bit, cuz do you you still. Shoot on occasion, right, you know, what? How did you get into like similar thing, another another thing, how did you get into it? And um what is it now?
So.
Sorry, go for it.
So I think the first thing I got was a GoPro, for recall, I got a GoPro four, I think it was, it was the one, it was a four when they first went to like night laps. And night photography is kind of what I really fell into, I still think that stuff's super cool and then uh. You know, also I got a drone too, and so we had, we were able to put the GoPro on a drone. And then that was before like DJI, there's the Phantoms and all that, like we actually had to solder stuff in to broadcast video back. Back is it's kind of rudimentary, but it's fancy, so. That that's kind of what really got me into photography, then I ended up buying like the seventy D as well, um I have a five D now. And I love sports photography, so I I still shoot, I shoot way more free stuff like pro bono than I ever will. Like actual make.
Yeah, it's more the the hobbyist side, yeah.
You know, I definitely didn't break even this year, COVID just destroyed everything and but I just, I also don't put it as a priority in my life. I put my council job as my priority and photography comes second where you know, I'm able to shoot, I promised myself um. One varsity sport at Sparks High School every year, so baseball, basketball, tennis, whatever it is. And I give the kids, I give them their photos for free, you know, I don't charge them, if we do team photos, I I do charge for that, but just try to give back so they have something. Uh and that's where I real that's that's enjoy, that's that's my love, that's my love of giving back to the community, um weddings are fun. They're stressful, you know, there's a whole nother level.
So you shoot weddings, huh?
I will, I'll shoot anything, I shot some family, I did shoot some family portraits to share, I shot a wedding as well, socially distanced wedding, which.
How was that?
Wear a mask for four hours and everyone's on Zoom, so that was kind of interesting. Um not everyone, but a majority of the wedding people, not wedding party, but.
So the bride and groom are in person.
Uh huh, and then the parents were there and then everyone else was on Zoom. And then they did a drive by reception. And you know, honk, and so it's just different photo ops, different things.
That's kind of cool slash. You do what you can.
You know, there is. Not trying to like like toot my own horn, but I won an award this year where normally we would, so I won twenty under forty, so there's. Twenty, I'm one of twenty people that are forty years younger, but you had to be.
Be under forty years old and the top and they have like a list of twenty people.
So there's a hundred and twenty people that got nominated and then I made final twenty and so the ceremony, like I got nominated last year, I lost. And it is what it is, you know, you take the you take the L and you move on.
Cuz you don't submit for it, right?
No, so Sandy, Sandy Parker's actually nominated me last year and nominated me this year.
Oh, nice, shout out to Sandy.
And uh either way, they had the event at the drive ins, at the drive in movie theater, cuz we we all sat in our cars and we watched. So it was kind of weird, we had to record a video saying, oh, I'm so happy I won, you know. Yeah, but you don't know if you won or lost. So like you're trying to be excited, but like I'm happy I won, but you could have had a fake video of winning. But they, you know, they still were able to do the event at the drive ins, we were still able to kind of get together. But like me winning my election party, I couldn't have a party with all my friends, which I normally would do. So I know there's those things.
No, I'm 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 always curious to hear about the uh the the covid versions of of certain events cuz. I'm in the mindset of like. I almost feel like it's better not to have the event at all, just because it's just sad otherwise. With with like high school graduations and stuff. I'm like, well, I'm just trying to imagine putting putting myself in the shoes of. Of graduating, I'm like, well, you know, it's just you you'll get in the mindset, like it's just a ceremony, it's. The circumstance of the year, it's fine, I don't need it versus like we're gonna force it in this weird environment. And I'm not really gonna get the experience and it's like it feels like it's almost for me, I'm like, uh. I'm good without it, I'm good.
We did at Sparks High, which no one, I don't think anyone else did, we had an in-person graduation ceremony, but we did it outside. And we socially distanced it and it took us six hours to do and so. We only, you know, Reed was probably around two fifty, you're graduating class, maybe three.
I don't remember.
We're like a hundred and forty, so your graduation is normally like three, four hours anyways, ours is like an hour, hour and a half. And so we were able to do a socially distanced graduation where you still get photos taken and I I took all the photos, so I wore a mask for. Six hours. So I'll never complain about wearing a mask after that day, cuz it was brutal, it was so.
Look, when I had it, when I have to work, I'm working a twelve hour day with a mask on.
I get it.
For days on end.
I I won't, I don't complain where like, I get it.
So uh but yeah, no, that's interesting, so it was six hours. And like the families, like I'm sure it was probably just. Limited limited space and I was like, all right, only the people that need to be there, we're not, please don't fly a family and like that kind of stuff.
It was interesting to see how. We were able to adjust a various events this year and there's a lot of events that got canceled, definitely just straight up.
All the fun stuff, the rib cook off.
No, it's a. Different year, for sure.
Alright, so photography.
Sorry.
No, it's good, um. I don't know what to ask, I'm I feel like I'm not, I've I've gotten away from the photo side for sure. Like I I dabbled a little bit just to get comfortable with the camera and. Yeah, it's just part of the process, I wanna whatever, but now I try to stay away from the camera altogether, I'm like, alright, there's people for that. I'm not that people, I wanna focus on the story, I wanna focus on the intent of the people in front of the camera and. And kind of help bring the whole vision to life and and kind of trust. Person, the person with the camera, I'm like, alright, this is what I'm looking for, what do you think, and have that whole back and forth is. What I love to do, um but I'm glad that uh your the five D sounds cool, how long have you had that? That's a that's a it's a nice step up, that's a mark four, mark five. Mark three.
Yeah, um I think four years now. So I enjoy it, um. Photography is fun, it's just it's a hobby, it's still, you know, I pay I pay my taxes and all that, like it's a legal business.
Having hobbies is perfectly good. What other hobbies do you have these days? Have you adopted anything new? Do you bike?
I still cycle, I still cycle, I play some softball, just some kickball. A little geocaching. What else?
You know, I see you on uh cuz we both have, you have a Nintendo Switch. And I think I have you as a friend, we don't play anything together, but I see you pop up on occasion, I'm like, alright, he's playing Mario Party again. Or like Mario Kart or like, I don't know, you, yeah.
So I I had, I let my buddy borrow my. So uh yeah, Jesse Wees, I think you know, you might know Jesse, but his kids, you know, he's. Um anything else, kids all the time, cuz they're not, they weren't in school and so. They, I just left the switch there.
So it's not even you.
I saw the switch is at my house though now, because Santa brought them a switch.
Oh, that's nice.
And so the switch hasn't left my backpack though in two weeks, it's it's there, so.
Okay, I thought I was kind of hoping that you were still playing those games, I know you're you're more of a fan of those uh. You're a fan of the party games more than.
You know, so I bought.
Smash Brothers.
I so I bought Smash Brothers. And I'm horrible at it.
It's tough.
But I bought it, I was like, I'm gonna just, I gotta like get good at this game, but Mario Kart, I'm. So I know I I play a little, not, you know, I don't have a TV in my room, I don't have a Netflix.
You don't need a TV, you have the switch.
I don't know. I I fill my time up with being social, with talking to people and that's just my lifestyle.
That's I mean, that's the lucky part, I guess, I'll say the positive side of the of the job is cuz I love. I'm I I don't know how you define your personality, you're like the introvert versus extrovert, but like for me. I feel like I'm an introvert that's worked really hard to learn to like the extroverted side. So I've developed this weird in between where like I need that interaction to just feel. Good, you know, sane, so when covid hit, my excuse was always like, I'm in LA, there's tons of creative people around me, I can have coffee. Like infinitely cuz there's just. So many people, so but then now everything shut down and it's. Not advised to just go willy nilly into public and so you wanna be very thoughtful with your interactions. So I mean, that's one of the reasons for the podcast, it was like I need to talk to people and I need to talk to them for a long time. Here's a here's a an outlet for that, but um cuz otherwise like, you know, this is a once a week thing that I do. And uh it keeps me, keeps me, keeps me going. So I like that you kind of have this built in socialness with it, that I'm sure it can come back to bite you sometimes, we don't really feel like having interactions, but.
Oh, for sure.
But I do like um. I do, that sounds nice, is you're social and that's what you do with your time and that sounds lovely.
You know, there's, I'll be the first one, we talk about going to a like galas, like different fundraisers or events, there's days, I'm. I'm beat, I don't wanna talk to. You know, it's it's a different level of us, if I was like, hey Eddie, let's go to breakfast and you know, we're just gonna talk about heart friends or whatever, like good. You know, normal things, if I ask some people, somebody asks me to go to breakfast, we are talking work and it's work, work, work and it's.
There's no escape.
No escape. So and then you're, you gotta be in your A game at all time, you know, um.
Sounds interesting, I'm trying to imagine, I I I have a hard time imagining you at these, talking business all day. Like it's it sounds interesting.
Oh, it's different, you know, and then you have people that are trying to. Ask you questions to get information.
Alright, and you can feel that though, yeah.
Just yeah, like you know, someone's asking you, like or like someone asks you, oh, what's, what are some fun movie ideas you have? And you just drop your favorite one and they run with it. And take it, um and obviously I hope you wouldn't do that, but you might, they might have built enough trust up to you. They might have sugar coated you all day, buy a couple of shots or drinks or cocktails and you think you can trust them.
Well, I guess the plus side on the creative stuff is if I did spill the beans on. Cuz I do talk to people about movie ideas and stuff, so if I do, the positive thing about sharing a creative idea. As far as like a storyline or something is I could tell it to you. And that's, there's still the process of writing it, there's still the process of producing it and they're like the creative vision of. Like what's in here and putting on paper, like I would write it differently cuz I have my take on it and so it's a little. I feel like I'm a little bit safe on that, I know there are a lot of people that are afraid of like, well, if I tell them that the movie is about X. They'll make a movie about X, but then their movie about it is a whole different, even genre than the one that I would make about it. But I feel like the thing, the information you give is a little, probably a little bit more clear cut. People, I don't know what people want to know, they just want the gossip.
That's, he loves company.
I had one more question. And I can wrap it up.
Sounds good.
But I forgot what it was. So is there, I'll think about it, I'll think of it as we're going. But um what? What what's next? I've kind of already asked you that question. I don't know, like what is there, what what have we not talked about that you want, is there anything? Any questions for me or? It's fine if not.
Yeah, no, no, um. You know, I I think if I was gonna sum up to everyone's listening and watching is. You know, look, your city council, your whatever officials, we're all human beings, we're literally. Normal people, we shower every day, we eat lunch.
Well, these days at least.
But you know.
Speaking for myself, sorry.
You know, if you have a problem, reach out, don't be afraid, uh I wouldn't say be afraid, like don't be afraid, like we're all normal people and if they don't help you. Don't vote for them, like get involved with, you know, other candidates, cuz we all get excited about president. And I would make an argument that my life has a larger influence in your life and someone's life than the president ever will. And don't get me wrong, the president does have an influence in your life, but you know, I could put, I the city council, we could put a. A drive, we could put a twenty four hour bar next to your house or. Whatever it is, you know, we can up the speed limit in your neighborhood to a hundred miles an hour or things like that. The president would never have that influence uh to it and you know, just getting involved, I'm I'm not saying be a political junkie at all, but. We, it's important to kind of, if you wanna make change, if you wanna be about it, you know, not just sharing that Facebook article or. You know, whatever whatever it is, you know, go help a help a candidate or help a ballot question or, you know, get behind something. This is important for you to be engaged and that that goes for anyone of me age.
Yeah, is there anything else, I'll I'll add on to that, like I think about. I know, uh again, the book My Experience was witnessing the the LA. The LA lockdowns. The L A lockdowns and I follow a lot of actors on Instagram and that kinda stuff and everybody's like scrambling to try to figure out what could I do? Like there's the Black Lives Matter movement, there, all the covid and. All the mental illness, oh, there's, there's plenty of things going on in the world and we're just like, what could I do to help? Any other advi- okay, so you, I like the the mention of. Interacting with your city council member. Does. Does matter and and you, you you can be heard in that way, so that's a good place to voice specific. Uh, specific concerns or opinions. Um, is there any other thing you could recommend? Cause I, like, I think about, for me, one thing that I was doing was picking up trash around my neighborhood, cause L A is disgusting. L A is bad. So that was like one thing, I was like, oh, I'm making a direct impact in my neighborhood and um. That was kinda my way of getting out some other energy of trying to physically see a difference in the world around me. But I don't know what one could do in this particular area or.
So you know, in this area, it depends what you're, what you're passionate about, so you know, you're talking about picking up trash. Up here in Reno Sparks, we have various nonprofits that do that, uh, tomorrow, actually today was the first kickoff day. Before keep checking, it was beautiful, K T and B, their Christmas tree recycling, so I'm going out tomorrow, I'm gonna recycle trees. We're gonna take them off people's cars and we mulch them and then we actually spread the bark throughout the north, through, in in spring, summer in our local parks. And so that's just one item where you could help, you know, picking up trash is a awesome, very awesome uh, deed where. You could give it a couple of friends, you can clean up a park, you know, clean, you know, get a couple of people, you can make a larger difference in an area. You might even inspire someone to do the same, you know, they might see you guys, oh, blah blah blah. Um, you know, I wanna be a part of, be a part of it too, or be a part of it too. And a lot of the time, that's the problem, is people wanna help, but they don't know how to help. Like, that's literally your question is, you know, how can people help? And you know, they they want to, they just don't know how. And so I think a simple Google search of of whatever you're passionate about, if you want. You know, for mental health, those are things that as electeds, we do have a ability and impact on. But we also need, you know, up to you to help either lobby for. Maybe the federal government to make sure they give us more money for that or the state or. Washington County does some social services too, you know, reaching out to the, that, the right elected body to help. And uh, influence the decisions, cause if no one says anything, we all assume. Everything's fine. And we know, I'm not saying, there's no way any of us know that the world's fine.
It's just because you already have so many directions you can go in that you, if it's not on the table, you're not gonna address it, yeah.
And and then, you know, you have the conversation, a lot of the time is, it's nice when people have a. A complaint with a suggestion, instead of just complaining about, you know, the parks being dirty. Maybe the, hey, my park's dirty, can we do this by doing a park cleanup? You know, can you help that? And you know, there's, it's always nice when people come with solutions.
I love solutions.
Solutions are very nice, you know, and we're talking about money, you know, we all have, the cities and governments all have budgets, just like we all do, so. I could say, you know, let's spend another hundred dollars, you know, say, in our own personal life at buying new shoes. We either can make another extra hundred dollars, but we probably aren't gonna make an extra hundred, so we need to get a hundred from either buying coffee or going to dinner. Or something, we had to take it from somewhere, it's like mental health, if we wanna put more money to mental health, do we wanna take that away? From housing or from our fire department, police department or potholes or, you know, what do you wanna give up? Or do you wanna pay more taxes? That's another, we have to make more revenue somewhere. So you know, those are all things that, you know, and and also I'll keep in mind, just cause if you think something's right. We are elected by the majority.
Yeah, it's more than just you.
Yeah, the majority of people would theoretically share a similar idea, just to a certain extent. But I think you should be able to have an open dialogue with your elected officials.
That's the hope, that's the, that's where.
Yeah, um, you know, but like you said, the whole reelect, that word, people, there's people that should not be elected in office, they get reelected. Because of the reelect, that word.
Say, oh, they must have been doing something right to be there in the first place. Yeah, it's tough, it's tough to be in the loop in so much, so many elements, but um. No, yeah, thanks for, thanks for being on, I like, I like hearing about your experience in this, this world that I have. Know, experience in myself. But yeah, so I guess I'll just leave, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me, I'm proud of you, Eddie, I'll definitely say that one to you that, you know, you took a chance and you moved to L A and that's. That was so crazy, I remember hearing that you were moving and I was like, that's wild, like, like whatever, you know, I I can't fathom that in my head. I can't fathom moving from Sparks, like I just, I couldn't. But you took a chance and you made it happen and I'm sure there's naysayers that people talk and tell you that, what are you doing, this and this?
For me, I I don't necessarily have that experience. Cause I was already doing so much video stuff before I moved and I got so much done before I made the jump that I was like, oh, he's already accomplished. Such and such, such and such, he's probably just gonna make it work down there too. So it was almost on the, the other side where like there was this ex- expectation of success. Felt like I was kinda jumping into, maybe I'm manufacturing that myself, but I don't know. Regardless, I didn't, I didn't have anybody really telling me I couldn't do it. But now I just gotta, same as, same as everybody, you know, same as, same as you, we're all just trying to get better at what we do. And become people that other people wanna have around, so. Let's just, let's just keep at it, mister, where can people keep, keep up in the loop with uh, Mister Donald? Where's, where are the places to be?
So all my social medias, my Facebook, Instagram, Twitter is all Donald for Sparks. Um, there's my website, my campaign website is sparksproud.com. Uh, so there's all those, you can sign up for my e-newsletter through the website, um, there, um. Those are kinda the best, you know, I'm pretty good pushing content out that Sparks relatable. Um, or relatable to myself, and I try to be as personable as I can be, um, you know, through my social media outlets. That's that, so thanks Eddie.
Alright, bye.